Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It's April 21st, 2025, and this 30th meeting of the 26th Council will come to order. All councilors will be present this evening. Council Lewis is just on his way. He'll be here momentarily. We're going to start the evening with a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance in English and Spanish. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at a table near the chambers entrance. Members of the public, city staff, and the media have the ability to view this meeting in person and on live streams through four different platforms: GovTV, On Comcast Channel 16, the GovTV website, YouTube, and Zoom webinar. The live streams can be accessed from most smartphones, tablets, or computers. Also, this meeting is closed captioned, and you may enable the closed captioning services on your television or device at this time. The video recording of this and all past council meetings will remain available for viewing at any time on the City Council's website. Council staff is available via telephone if members of the public need assistance finding the videos online. Please call 505-768-3100 for assistance during business hours Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 p.m. this evening if needed. With regard to decorum in the chambers, we want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause, snapping, or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are all respectful of one another. We're going to start with other business tonight. The council will move into executive session to discuss matters related to 1015-1H7. Discussion subject to attorney-client privilege pertaining to OC 2535 and relating litigation in Mayor Tim Keller versus Albuquerque City Council. We will need a roll call vote to move to executive session.
Counselor Baca.
Wait, hold on. Wait, sorry. Hold on. Mr. Morrow?
Excuse me. Council President, could we have a motion in a second?
I move to go into executive session.
Thank you.
There's a second from Counsel Champagne. Thank you.
Counselor Baca.
Yes.
Counselor Champagne.
Yes.
Counselor Pueblecorn.
Yes.
Counselor Graut.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis. Counselor Penya.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Pesant.
Yes.
Houses unanimously.
We will be back. We are back from executive session. I affirm the matters discussed in executive session were limited to those specified in the motion for closure. We're moving on to proclamations and presentations. Counselor Baca, you have a presentation? Counselor Baca, you have a presentation? Is there a presentation from Mr. Nathan Martinez?
Oh, sorry.
Who's going to provide an update on the firehouse restoration at the rail yards?
Thank you, Madam President. My apologies. Yes, I have a presentation from Mr. Nathan Martinez who will provide an update on the firehouse restoration at the rail yards.
Yeah, he's here. All right. Good evening, Council President, city councilors. I'd like to take your time to provide an update on the rail yards campus, specifically the firehouse which is located on the rail yards campus just a few blocks south of downtown Albuquerque. The General Services Department is preparing an amendment to receive approval from this council to approve the federal funding path-through grant which was awarded by the New Mexico State Cultural Properties Restoration Fund to make improvements to the rail yards firehouse. It is our intent to use these grant funds to stabilize the rail yards firehouse. A brief history of the rail yards campus and of the firehouse.
Mr. Martinez, I think you put it towards the computer up here for the remote.
Got it. Point there? All right.
Thanks, Director.
Do I push the arrow? To the right? Try it again? All right.
Perfect. There you go.
All right. So, slide one. The city adopted the master plan for the rail yards in 2023. The firehouse is an iconic building on the northwest section of the campus, and most of the structures on the campus were built in the early 1900s. New Mexico State Cultural Properties Restoration Fund grant will allow $250,000 for facility stabilization of the firehouse. And that's a brief history of the rail yards firehouse. Slide two. The city has received the grant and is preparing the amendment for council approval. Stabilization plans include building envelope improvements, which is the exterior of the facility, and other physical improvements as a preventative measure for the firehouse. The General Services Department will work with a local architect, Lee Gomelski, to achieve stabilization. Lee has a background with rail yards, and so we're excited to partner with him, and he's committed to stabilization efforts not only at the rail yards firehouse but at the rail yards campus in its entirety. Next slide is a brief description of what GSD expects to achieve with the grant. We're hoping to do some re-roof and insulation improvements, repair some failing wall systems that exist on the west side of the firehouse, as well as site improvements to improve the grading and drainage for the storm runoff water that is at the site. And with that, I'd like to conclude my presentation. Stand for any questions.
Counselor Baca? Any councilors have questions? Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you give me an idea of what you mean by stabilization efforts?
So, the integrity of the facility requires some stabilization, right, so that way the facility can sustain the test of time? So, basically, making the investments so that the facility remains standing.
Is that with the foundation? Is that what you're talking about?
Currently, we haven't identified any failures in the foundation, but overall the structure, like some of the grading and drainage has caused degradation to some of the walls, but structurally, it doesn't seem to have taken much of a loss when it comes to its structure. There are some walls that can use some repair and improvement. Otherwise, the rail yards has relatively good structure.
Thank you.
Councilors, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Director.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have a presentation from Ms. Christine Burner, the City Economist, who is going to provide us a regular update on the gross receipts tax.
Thank you, Madam President.
President.
Good evening.
And you all should have a little one pager here. This is the GRT report that I typically send out every month. So, I'll just get right with it. So, for FY '25, growth based on the state's 1.225 was slightly negative for January. It declined 1.1%. However, in February, it did rebound a bit to 4.7% growth over last year. And I don't see any anomalies in the last two distributions as far as lump sums or clawbacks or anything. And so, those seem to be generally reflecting what's going on in our economy. Cumulative growth based on the 1.225 rose to 2.6% then, which you can see on the graph. That's still slightly above the 2.1% that's built into the growth for FY '25 budget, the growth that's assumed. All business sectors, not including the food and medical, hold harmless. Those increased 3.7% in February, and those are at 1.3% for the year. And you'll see that construction and professional, scientific, and technical services doing fairly well consistently in FY '25, but retail has pretty much struggled the entire fiscal year so far. And with that, I'll just, regarding the general economy, there was a Wall Street Journal article this morning that seems to sum up sort of how I'm feeling and struggling with this. The headline was "Trump is Everywhere Except in the Economic Data," right? And what that means is that while there's a lot happening at the federal level, the data that's being fed into our economic models, there's not much of a change. It essentially looks generally the same as it was in the prior administration, and that's the same thing for the revenue projection that I have for the city. I'm not seeing anything that's incredibly scary right now, although, you know, the news that we get every day, that's certainly disorienting. However, economists have for a while now been thinking that employment's going to drop severely, that inflation's going to increase, and we still, we haven't seen that yet. And the reason I bring this up is because, like I said, that data feeds into our economic models, and the revenue I'm seeing hasn't changed so far. But I don't want you to misunderstand what I'm saying, that I think everything's going to be just fine, right? A lot of what's been going on could still be filtering through the system, which is huge, right? And so, we still really don't know what's happening. But I will say, though, the next UNM-Bieber economic forecast is actually May 2nd, and so we'll get a chance to discuss with them what's going on. And then, S&amp;P Global, that's where I get my federal data. They put out a new April economic summary, and they are putting the baseline forecast at 50%. And there's a phrase that I've not seen before. They're calling what they assume in the baseline being "growth recession," right? And so, it's a period of below potential growth and rising unemployment. One last thing here. The optimistic scenario is at 15%, and the pessimistic scenario is at 35%, and so that's what they're showing. With that, I conclude. Sorry.
Thank you. Councilors? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President. So, retail was shown 7.7% and then cumulative of 5.6%. Is that the cumulative of year over year, correct?
Madam Chair.
It would reflect an entire year?
Madam Chair, what I did, I used the first several months from FY '24 and compared those with the first several months of FY '25. So, it's cumulative year-to-date?
So, cumulative of, so then what's the 7.7? That's the change?
That's just this month.
That's the change over the prior month?
That was February, correct.
So, would that reflect a trend? I mean, would you say that's a pretty good-sized trend there?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis? Well, for the last several months, yes, since the beginning of this fiscal year, but there's a lot going on there. I mean, it's compared directly with the months, you know, in this time. Last year, we were just doing better. But yeah, for us, retail's been struggling.
And, Madam President, any, have you seen that kind of, I mean, most recently, you know, say, the past three or four years, have you seen some of those, like, by the quarter there, have you seen some of those kinds of drops in the retail?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, I don't know that I've, I don't know that I have, but that's not to say it's not there. I'd have to go and look. I was particularly interested in this year-to-date, and I wanted to see how we were doing so far this fiscal year.
And any other insight into the reason for that type of a percentage of drop?
Madam Chair, I think generally, well, that's, it's a little weird. The national data doesn't show that quite of a trend that I can see, but here, folks are, you know, consumptions down as far as retail. It's just something I think folks are worried about all the information that's out there and the way this is impacting New Mexico, but I don't have insight, you know, direct insight.
Madam President, any indication of small business, large business? I mean, obviously, we have the percentages of categories of large businesses and small businesses. Was that, or any insight into whether that was a number of large retail or possibly affecting, you know, about the same with the small businesses in the city?
Madam President, Counselor Lewis, that's something I can look at. I can dig into the data and see what I can find, and I'll also have the opportunity to talk to UNM-Bieber before too long, so I can try to look into that.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I was just seeing on here, and maybe this isn't where you usually track it, but I thought it was. The online sales from the state. So, I don't see that on here? Am I missing something?
Madam Chair, Member Penya, the online sales aren't broken out specifically. We don't get that data from the state. It is all lumped into retail and the various business sectors. We were never able to get just online data, GRT. They said that it was too difficult to, they'd have to reconfigure their system, they'd have to have businesses, give them a whole new way of reporting the data, you know, and right now, there's not like a checkbox on their returns that says, "This is Internet and this isn't."
Madam President, so, I was, actually, we've talked about this kind of year after year, I think even before this administration, is that the state was going to look at means to do that, because the online line sales is really where the increase has been shown year after year. So, us as a council, if it's not broken out, then we, how do we know what's really, I mean, if it's accurate, the online sales have been trending upwards, and, you know, retail brick and mortar has been decreasing. I mean, it's more significant if that trend is still accurate, right, in terms of what's happening down on the ground with our city in terms of brick and mortar? So, can you get an update from the state and come back and ask them to give us that? Because I know there was something being worked on. It was going to be done the year, next year, next year, and we were going to be able to get that data. So, it has to be out there somewhere, right? Even if it's not in an app or in a, that information has to be out there somewhere. So, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we can see that before we start making some real big decisions here, because at first, I know we weren't getting all that revenue, because they didn't have a way how to track those taxes, and then the state came up with a way on how to track those taxes. And then, to get that information down to us was another little hurdle, but I think it's important, right? Because even as, you know, leaders in the city, as our mayor, how do we know how dire our situation is with our brick and mortar if we can't separate the two? Or not, right? Or not? But the number here shows that it's pretty significant. And then, my other question was, I mean, comment or question, is, so, we're seeing a 2.1% growth rate over last year, overall?
Madam Chair, Member Penya, the 2.1% is the estimated growth rate for FY '25 in the current budget.
In the current budget, okay.
And so, the 2.6% is the cumulative growth, so that's where we are year-to-date for GRT revenue, or for the, based on the-
Right, but the projected is the 2.1. Okay. And then, for FY '25, what's the projected? For the FY '26, sorry.
Oh, Madam President.
You don't forecast?
No, Madam President. You will get that presentation at the COW, the first meeting, and we will go over what's in the current projection for FY '26. I'm sorry, I don't have those, that information in front of me.
So, Madam President, generally, would increase, decrease?
Oh, Madam President, Counselor Penya, yes, there's a slight increase for FY '26.
Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of questions, because I don't know a whole lot on this topic, and I'll be sure to admit that to the public, and I'm sure you probably have a lot of questions out there, too. Just one note for the future. Can you send us this electronically so our staff can put it up for the folks watching online? Because right now, the folks in the audience and the folks online can't see this and have no clue probably what we're even looking at. So, I think that's really important to me. The other thing is for the Whole Foods, and I know Counselor Baca explained a little bit about the state hold harmless, but I'm looking at the same for the whole medical and state hold harmless, and a big difference in the amounts, percentage cumulative change, percent change. Can you talk about the Whole Foods line?
Correct, Madam Chair, Counselor. So, the Whole Foods, and the recent, yeah, for the uninitiated, you wouldn't know what that means. So, the Whole Foods means the food hold harmless that we receive from the state before it's being phased out. So, that's our actual gross receipts on food, right? And so, the same thing for medical. And then, the reason the year-to-date, I believe, for the food is that in November of 2020, it was 2024, I guess, no, no, November of 2023, we received a huge lump sum of food hold harmless. And so, this compared with that makes this one look the negative 9.3%, and so that's what you're seeing right there. Does that make sense?
That helps a lot, because I'm looking at that and saying, people can't afford food, so they're not buying it. That's like, especially in a food desert in my area, that was alarming to see that difference.
Madam Chair, yes, food has certainly increased quite a bit, but that's what this is referring to, as far as I understand.
Thank you.
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Graut?
Thank you, Madam President. Can you please get us that information that you find out on May 2nd from UNM-Bieber?
Madam Chair, Counselor Graut, just to clarify, so, when we get an updated economic forecast from them, just have that ready for May 2nd. Is that what I understood you were saying?
Well, you said that your meeting, your next meeting is May 2nd with them. Can you please share that information with us, May 3rd?
Sure, I certainly can.
Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm looking at the construction. GRT did well this month after declining 7.3%. If we were to look at that GRT moving the way it has been, my question is, what was it in December of last year?
Madam Chair.
Did we just have a one-month decrease, or was that something that was trending, and then all of a sudden, in February, March, and April, we're up?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Counselor Sanchez, I can dig into that data a little bit more as well. Construction goes, it's up and down month to month depending on what projects are coming online or cycling through, so I could see if I can find something for you.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Madam President, do you have any data that shows the effect of the percentage of GRT, the level of GRT within the city that affects different sectors? You know, meaning that, I would think that, you know, some of the construction was planned a year ago, you know, decisions that people make to buy food, and that's going to come to us, you know, whether we collect it or the state collects it, obviously, but I would imagine that the effect of the level of GRT on retail, or on food, or on construction has a different effect possibly. Is there some data that shows that?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, are you asking about the relative impact from each sector to the city's overall GRT? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, and how that affects decision-making. Maybe in the construction industry, maybe it doesn't affect it as much as in the, you know, in the food sector or the retail sector.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, so, in some of our larger reports that we put out, maybe for bondholders, we do percent impact from each sector, right? And then, the relative size of each sector, like the healthcare sector is a huge sector, so any small movement is a huge impact on GRT. So, I can get you the relative impact for each sector as like a percentage of all GRT. Does that sound like something you'd be interested in?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Lewis's question made me think of something else for how do we get a better idea of online retail, because you said we rely on the state for that, for that information? But there's something called RP-80 reports that could tell us by location, like geographic area, and by industry, and then we would be able to narrow that down by the NAICS codes for online. Is that something you do?
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, so, again, we've asked the state several times to try to break out Internet sales, and I'm going to approach them again and ask, but the answer's been no several times, so.
Right, but I just did a quick Google search on how other municipalities do this for themselves without relying on the state, and it said that we, do you get the RP-80 reports for Albuquerque? Okay? And are those broken down by geographic area and industry? Okay. So, we could potentially use the NAICS codes for online businesses that are tied to that report, apparently, and find out which, how many online businesses we have we're getting GRT for.
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, again, businesses that are online aren't distinguished from other regular businesses.
Right, which is why you would need that NAICS code.
The NAICS codes tell us, is it retail, is it construction, is it hair salons? I mean, that's what it does, but it doesn't tell us whether they're online or not.
Well, again, according to, and I, trust me, I'm trying to do gotchas. I'm just trying to learn along with the public, and I'm learning with you. It's saying here that now there's a requirement of online companies who are doing retail from the federal government to identify a specific code in addition to the ones you're talking about. Code number 454110, electronic shopping and mail-order houses have to have this identifier now, and so we should be able to just search, just to get some ranges on what we're pulling in from online GRT.
So, Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, correct. There are some businesses that are dedicated, but you will, we won't be capturing everyone who's doing online business.
Some is better than none.
Okay, right. And actually, there's some federal data that shows general, broad, online shopping, and I think we might have it at the state level, so there's-
Yeah. Awesome. So, thank you, Madam President. I'm just trying to get to some solutions so we can get the answers, and we don't have to put it on the state all the time, which I agree, they should help us with that. But based on this, this seems simply enough to get a, even though we know it's not going to capture everybody, get us a little bit closer to an answer. Wonderful. Can we work together on that? Awesome. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Burner. Thank you for being here and for the update.
Thank you.
Councilors, before we move on, I just want to make sure that you're aware, sitting in the front, we have Associate CAO Carla Martinez tonight, CFO Kevin Soroso, and I don't know what the, it's an attorney of sorts for Lauren Keefe, but he's an attorney, but I don't know what your role, like, what the label is.
Deputy City Attorney Brian Rowland.
Thank you. I had the name, but Deputy City Attorney Brian Rowland. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That way, if you have questions, you're all aware of who's up there and if you need anything. We're going to move on to the Journal. I move approval of the April 7th Journal. There's a second by Counsel Rogers. Councilors, any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the Journal, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC368 on tonight's agenda for action. EC368 is the mayor's recommendation of award for Human Resources Flexible Spending Accounts Administration. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Madam Vice President and others. Councilors, any questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purposes of placing EC369 on tonight's agenda for action. EC369 is the mayor's recommendation for award for Human Resources Basic Life Supplemental Life Long Short Term Disability Insurance. There's a second from Counsel Graut. All those in favor of EC369 on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I move to amend the letter of introduction to place EC371 on the May 5th council agenda instead of referring it to the Finance Government Operations Committee. EC371 is the recommendation of award for medical sheltering and social service support services. There's a second from Counsel Pueblecorn. Any questions or comments? Councilors, all those in favor of amending the letter of introduction for EC371, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? I think that passes unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC374 on tonight's agenda for action. EC374 is requesting authorization to establish a professional service agreement with Youth Development Incorporated, YDI, to provide gateway family housing navigation. There's a sec- There's a sec, a second from Counselor, Madam Vice President. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing E C 375 on tonight's agenda for action. E C 375 is requesting authorization to establish a professional service agreement with Chicanos Por La Casa to provide gateway women's housing navigation. There's a second from Madam Vice President. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselor, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to pull O 80 out of Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee and place it on the May 5th council agenda for action. O 80 is adopting a zone, a zoning map amendment from P D to R 1 A for approximately seven acres, from P D to M X T for approximately 44 acres, and from R 1 A to M X T for approximately 22 acres on the Salazar Family Trust between 98th and Anser Boulevard.
There, there's a motion and a second by Counselor Feeblecorn. Any questions or comments? Counselors, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Move the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing O 82 on tonight's agenda for action. O 82 is approving a project involving Vitality Works, Inc., pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and the city ordinances, F S O 0410. The city's implementing legislation for that act to support the expansion and modernization of Vitality Works production and manufacturing of botanical vitamin and nutris, I don't know how to say that word, never seen it before, nutricential, nutricanical supplements, essential oils and homeopathic products at Vitality Works facilities located in the city, authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and other documents in connection with the project, making certain determinations and findings relating to the project, including the appropriation of funds, ratifying certain actions taken previously, and repealing all actions inconsistent with the ordinance.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Feeblecorn. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules for O 82, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I'm, any other changes to the letter of introduction? I think we covered them all. I move approval of the letter of introduction. There's a second from Counselor Grouse. All those in favor of the approval of the letter of introduction, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to reports of committees, Counselor Champagne.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, April 14th, 2025, and reports out the following items in the matter of E C 327, E C 328, E C 329, E C 333, E C 334, E C 338, E C 342, E C 343, and O C 33, that they be approved. In the matter of O 76 and R 125, that they do pass. In the matter of R 129, that it do pass as amended. In the matter of E C 332, that it be noted of receipt. In the matter of E C 326, O 72, R 127, that they be without recommendation. And in the matter of O 77, that it be without recommendation as amended. And in the matter of O 75, that it be without recommendation as substituted. I make a motion to accept the committee report. I think you make that motion, don't you?
No, you made the motion.
Oh, awesome.
And then there was a second by Counselor Baca. Counselors, any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the committee report, please raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam President. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, April 16th, and reports out the following item in the matter of R 135, that it do pass. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
There's a second from Counselor Sanchez. All those, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the committee report for L U P S, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselors, are there any deferrals and withdrawals at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the.
No.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counselor Grouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I pull item V, E C 355, off the consent agenda. E C 355 is the Housing Forward Fund Fiscal Year 25 report.
And Counselor Champagne?
Yes, Madam President, I pull item I, R 136, off the consent agenda. R 136 is adjusting the fiscal year 2025 operating appropriations.
Counselors, any other amendments or changes, I'm sorry, to the letter, or the consent agenda? All right. For those individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on the board or commission, thank you for your willingness to serve. I'd like to call Ms. Loretta Narango Lopez to speak on R 25123 listed under consent. Ms. Narango Lopez, since this was on the consent agenda, although you signed up for general public comment, we wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to have your comment included prior to us voting on it. You will get the two minutes that are allowed for everyone else to speak later, and, but we wanted to make sure you had your time right now. You may proceed.
My name is Loretta Narango Lopez. I'm the president of the Santa Barbara Martinez Town Neighborhood Association, and we respectfully request that the city council deny R 2123 and its amendments, which is to change the portion of Martinez Town-Santa Barbara M R A boundaries to the downtown M R A boundaries. The reason for this change is first that this violates the Open Meetings Act. We did not hear the case, and it was not voted on at the Albuquerque Development Commission. It was not heard at L U P S. It was not heard on April 7th by city council, and so we're asking that this case be heard at Albuquerque Development Commission. They also, the 101 Lomas Boulevard and 220 Broadway Boulevard properties do not meet the criteria for the M R A code, chapters, Article 68, N M S A 1978. The, we, what we understand is that the Burger King has been renovated, so it's not a blighted area, and it followed all of the requirements, including the parking lot, was followed by what the I D O required. The current property that's vacant was the ponding area from Martinez Town and is being already looked at for development, so it's not blighted there either. We would like also to make it clear that we have been the stepchild of the city of Albuquerque, and we're very tired of it. We have asked this, the city to bring back the M R A that we had. We used it under John Q Hammond's when the hotel was used, but now they're saying that it didn't exist, and yet it does exist. In fact, we're the only one with a designated report that's required under an M R A and a plan. We have both of them, but it was never, it's, when the I D O was approved, they didn't include our M R A. So we're asking that it be reinstated and that they update it. There's a city agreement that they, that the city needs to follow to make that M R A updated, but they haven't done it at all.
Thank you.
So as the neighborhood association, I'd like more time, too. I think I only got two minutes.
Uh, no, you get two minutes, just like everyone else for public comment.
Just two minutes, okay. And there's other people that wanted to talk online, I think that would like to also talk on this.
We're not going to open up general public comment. We knew what you were, I don't, staff informed me that you wanted to speak on this, so we're going to, we allowed you to do it now, but they will still get their time to speak later.
I would just like to make sure that my April 18th letter that I sent to you and the council is on record, and all of the record that we have for, that Albuquerque Development Commission received, the minutes, everything that explained that this wasn't voted on.
Thank you, Madam.
I would like it for the record.
Counselor Lewis.
Madam President, Mr. Mar, does the bill violate the Open Meeting Act?
Counsel President, Counselor Lewis, no, it does not violate the Open Meeting Act. It was properly noticed on Friday.
Mr. Mar, will you speak up?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'm a little far away. No, the, addressing the bill tonight does not violate the Open Meetings Act. The bill was properly noticed on the council agenda on Friday, like anything else on tonight's agenda.
Counselors, any other changes to the consent agenda? I move approval of the consent agenda. There's a second by Counselor Baca. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to the items pulled from the consent agenda, Counselor Grouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to ask about E C 355, the Housing Forward Fund. Not sure who to talk to. This report notes that Los Altos Lofts is operated with revenue generated from rental income, which is good. How is that revenue used? Does it all go to the operator?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you for asking that question. So all, all our rentals go into one pot. It's actually the apartment fund. And that fund pays for administration, it pays for the reconstruction, any times that we have problems in terms of fixing apartment units, it goes back into that, and it pays for debt service. Now, as you correctly point out, this, this current one doesn't have debt service, but we put it all together to make sure all our debts are paid.
Okay. Thank you for that. Let's see, how much do, how much, I know that the operators get a sizable amount. What percentage do we typically get from our rental properties?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, it actually varies depending. So right now, we bring in, well, right now, I looked just yesterday, I'm sorry, Friday, we have about $500,000 in, in the pot. The reason I had to do that is because we had an emergency over the weekend, so I had to make sure we had a valve that went out in one of our apartments. So we try to maintain about $500,000 in that pot at all times. So it varies, it goes up and downs depending on breakages and redevelopment that we have to do on our apartments and complexes of that nature. I'll have to get back to you on the actual cash flow, if that's what you're asking, in terms of much of cash flow.
Yes, sir.
Let me get back to you, and I'd be happy to answer that question.
Okay. You kind of answered this. The city owns other housing units. Do those generate income as well, rental income, and they do? How is it allocated? So I think you kind of answered that. The report notes the emergency repairs at the beach apartments. 3.3 million is a lot of money for, to fix stairs. Did you compare the cost of tearing it down, the, the area down? All right. And then how come it was, how come it escalated to 3.3? Didn't, did we not see that it was in need of repair before it got to that point? Because that's, could have, I think it should have been avoided.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, in some part, it could not have been avoided, and I'll tell you why, is because of the type of structure that it has. The particular architect, although a famous architect and really good in terms of designs, created some structural issues. What they did is they actually created a stairway case that was actually attached to, to the structure itself. And so, and then covered everything up. So it was pretty late in the game when we discovered that the actual, because you couldn't see anything, was actually deteriorating to the point that we needed to replace. We did actually have ongoing maintenance. We put new, new metal on it and did lots of things to keep it. But when we went underneath, more deterioration. And so I'm happy to say, though, that we have a contractor on board right now, should be contracting right now, we pulled the permit, and we'll start that process right away.
Very good. Thank you. Just a couple more questions on this. Do, is 500,000 in the fund, is that enough? Or, I mean, where did you get 3.3 million?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, so that is the current amount that we have available to be able to process this. We may or may not need more. The only way we're going to be able to find out is each time that we do a new pod, because they're built on pods, is making sure that the structure every single time is solid. All the investigation we have done to this point, the structure's just fine.
Okay.
So it's a matter of taking away the staircase and putting in staircases that aren't attached to anything.
Sure.
It will change, I have to say this, and I feel pretty bad about it, it will change the look of this development considerably. It won't look as pretty, but it'll be functional, it'll be strong, and it'll be safe.
Very good. It's safe, safe is very important.
Safe is what safe is always for looking for.
So what you just told, if I understood you right, you had 3.3 million in the fund to support this repair?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's correct.
And so now you're at 500 K.
Oh, no, to be clear, 500 K is the amount that we have available in the fund, and we try to keep that amount available in the fund at any one time. So that covers not the beach, that covers all our development.
Right.
And as I had mentioned earlier, we had a break in the line, it costs way, way too much.
Right. I understand that.
And so we had to have the money available to do it. So that's where that comes from.
Sure. But what, if I'm understanding right, you had 3.3 million in the fund, which is great because then you had that major repair that you needed. So it, we'll be able to build this apartment fund again, so it gets, reach, it goes higher?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, there's actually two really pieces of good news here.
Okay.
One of the pieces of good news is, so, yes, for this next couple of years, it's going to be staying around at 500,000. However, in three years, we'll be paying off that debt service.
Good.
Because it's an old bond issuance.
Okay.
And so that will allow us far more funds than we currently have available to do major renovations and things of that nature. So it's a piece of good news.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Counselor Champagne, on this, on these questions, if you don't mind. Counselor Grouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just trying to kind of understand this. So it says in the bottom that it's the total committed and expended is 23 million, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's correct. 23 million is the total amount that had been provided to us to spend.
Okay. Some of them, the numbers, Madam President, some of the numbers are pretty exact, 6,000 or even the one we were just talking about, 3,328,267.82 cents, but some are generic as far as 8 million. What's the difference in it?
Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioner, in some senses, in some ways, for instance, when we put out an R F P, we said, we're only going to provide 8 million dollars for this. Or when we, for instance, purchase a hotel, we're going to use 6.5 million for this particular issue. When we're doing things like rehab, that's not as an exact science, and so we can't put that up. So rehab costs, you have different contractors, different billings, things of that nature, structural issues, structural analysis, so that tends to be a varied number.
And Madam President, what is on here, the, the beach apartments, there's a negative 197,000.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, so we had used, there was some extra funds that, there was, we wanted to make sure that the structural analysis was done complete before we did any permitting, so that's what happened there.
Okay. And one final question, Madam President. So adding these up, we work out to 22,604,000 and some change, and we allocated 23 million. So you're staying within that 694,000 for emergencies or?
Yeah, we know there's a mandatory overhead amount.
Okay.
That is taken out for general government services.
And that would account for the 6 million or, I'm sorry, the?
Yeah, that little.
Okay.
Extra.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. So you have me a little confused here. So the Housing Forward Fund is a separate fund that we've been using to do affordable housing, and this is how we paid for those repairs. I felt like, okay, let me just finish my, my thought here, but I thought that Counselor Grouse was asking if we're generating revenue as part of these, and the revenue generated, was that used to pay for these repairs? She, she may, but, so then I want, I wanted to, to add to that, to say that, when you came to us, I think on the 500,000 a short while back to do the initial repairs, I think you had let us know about, this was a few months back, right? Is that correct? Your?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, no, we were warning that there would be a considerable amount of funds based on this. We weren't asking for any money at that particular time, but we were saying that we're going to use this fund to be able to start the, that, those repairs.
Out of the Housing Forward Funds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes. So then, I guess, just to comment to our staff, is that if we can, like, put some kind of objective in this budget process, not for now, but just to really talk about, you know, the, the money generated from some of these housing that we own as a city, as the landlord, the money generated from some of these housing that we own as a city, as the landlord, as the owner, and we're investing a lot in terms of the management of it, and then we're not really seeing any kind of revenue from that, and not revenue to make money, but revenue to reinvest to do these repairs.
Right.
So, so, that's it. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, just for clarification, it's like, we do receive revenue, we do get extra money, and that's what that 500,000 is, that we keep in that, that's what that is.
Madam President, so, that's exactly what I was saying. So, I think you were mixing up pots, as you were talking about pots of money, and that's not, not good when we're trying to, you know, be able to make some decisions based on policy and funding. So, two separate pots, the 500,000, I agree, the 500,000, still agree that the 500,000 is way too little for all the properties that we own and not being able to, it's like we're taking in the rents just to pay the management companies, so, okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Montoya. I, I was very sad about the quality suites not working out. And then, I noticed that we took the funds from that, and we had to spend almost all of them on existing properties, which is painful in a time when we have such a need for new units. And while I love that we have some city-owned property, can you talk me through decisions moving forward in terms of, are we trying to acquire additional city-owned properties where the money does not go very far? Or are we really transferring over to the gap financing model for some of these other projects that we have that will get us way more units per year?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you for the question. We do both, right? So, it's important that we incrementally increase the amount of units that we own and oversee in order to be able to have enough capital to take care of issues that come out, like these staircases, right? We should have had enough money in advance to be able to have it. But because we're paying debt service, we're paying for management fees, we're paying for incremental, you know, repairs and things of that nature, there wasn't enough money there. So, one of the ideas is to incrementally increase that amount totally. In addition, however, our better brother is always to be able to assist in subsidizing new unit development with, with private, private folks in terms of our ability to assist in financing that. So, we're doing both.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving forward, so, you're saying that, moving forward, we are considering more city-owned purchases of affordable housing?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, if the opportunity arises and we can get things at the right price, and, as you know, for instance, we had an opportunity here, but the price would have been too high relative to, I believe, we should be paying because of the remediation issues and things of that nature. There's one thing about capital costs of acquiring something, but if you have extensive remediation problems and asbestos problems, that's not a situation you want to get into. The cost will be too high. So, we really look. So, there's opportunities for us, we're going to look for those opportunities, and if something really penses out for us, we're going to take that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. I'll just say, you know, I think the number of units that we're going to be able to get if we're purchasing and keeping, as opposed to providing gap financing, is, there's just no competition. We will get more units if we are able to help private investors, private developers, and I think we should be focused on that because we have a massive need, and the city's ability to not only purchase, that's very, very capital-intensive, to buy the whole thing, but then to maintain it, I mean, we can see the numbers in this, right? Six, almost 6 million dollars to maintain one property is, is a lot. So, I'll just leave it at that. But thank you so much for the report.
Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you mentioned an apartment fund. Can you, or maybe Mr. Sorcer, tell us who, where is that housed, the apartment fund?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, it's housed within the administration. All the, all the rentals that we receive go into this fund, and so, that's where we're able to pay for everything that needs to be paid in front of the units we have.
And I, I thank you to our budget team, because they're helping me look up, we haven't appropriated anything since FY '22, but there's 500,000 in that account right now? Or how much total is in that account right now?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, you haven't appropriated anything, to my knowledge, ever. So, those are funds that we receive from the rentals that we put into that fund in order to pay for expenses. So, to my, to my knowledge, and I could be wrong on this, we've never appropriated any money for that fund.
Sure. So, I'm just looking at what the team sent me. So, how much is in there now?
Approximately 500,000.
Of? Or that's just what we try to keep for emergencies?
That's what we attempt to be able to maintain. You know, expenses come up, roofs go down, you have to have enough money available to be able to take care of any issues that you have.
Okay. And that's separate from the Housing Forward Fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Thank you.
Counselor Grouse, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I move EC 355.
Is that a receipt to be noted?
Receipt be noted.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a second from Madam Vice President. Counselors, I think we've exhausted some of the questions. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselor Champagne?
Madam President, R. 25136 is adjusting the fiscal year 2025 operating appropriations. This resolution is reallocating 85,000 from the existing FY '25 general fund appropriations initially designed for non-recurring service contracts under the Health, Housing and Homelessness Department. The intent of this service providers either do not enter, did not enter into an agreement with the city, or the city departments opted not to proceed with the contracts, and rather allowing the funds to go unused, asking that we redirect them to a project that can be executed within the current fiscal year. It was brought to my attention that the, there is an ordinance issue brought up about this, and if I can ask Mr. Morrow for a little more details and explanation.
Before we move on to that, Mr. Morrow, is there a motion?
Ultimately, yes. There's going to be a motion to defer till May 5th.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a motion for a due pass right now, and then we can move on, so that way, we can go ahead and proceed with the discussion. Is there a second? There's a second by Counselor Grouse. Mr. Morrow?
Certainly, Counsel President Bassam, Counselor Champagne. Ordinance 21115 budget amendment by counsel during the fiscal year requires that no amendment to the budget shall be made without a public hearing prior to the meeting at which action is taken on the proposed amendment. And this particular resolution did not go to committee, and so, this is the first hearing on the, on this amendment.
Counselors, any questions, comments? Counselor Feblecorn?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I, I don't know that we have this, but I see Ms. Rumler up here, so we might. I would love to know what the specific items that were funded through HHH are that are being reallocated with this 85,000.
Counsel President, Counselor Feblecorn, the items that were discussed amongst staff and given to us by Counselor Champagne were for LifeQuest, for 25,000. This vendor declined funding from the city this year. The other two are from Tenderlove. There's a, there's a total of 60,000 from non-recurring funds, and at this moment, there are no active purchase orders for Tenderlove from HHH.
Thank you, Madam President. And can I ask the administration why there are no active contracts for Tenderlove for this 60,000? It's a, it's an organization that many of us, you know, very much support, and they do amazing work. So, what's going on with that?
Mr. Sorcer?
Counsel President and Counselor Feblecorn, the funding for Tenderlove, I do not believe it's in HHH. I believe it's either in ACS or Economic Development, but I don't think it's in HHH. I will also say, HHH is right about, is about to enter into a contract, they're waiting for insurance information from Locker 505, that's a 75,000 contract, and moving this money would preclude them from completing that contract, is what I'm told from the department.
Thank you, Madam President. I, you know, I've, I've been told differently from Tenderlove. So, I guess, before I can vote to take 60,000 away from HHH that's meant to go to an organization as upstanding as Tenderlove, I would love to get to the bottom of this. And so, I'm glad we're deferring. Can someone help us figure out what the status of that 60K is and why it's not contracted? And then, I would also like to know more about LifeQuest and why they turned down their 25K. And as another question, Madam President, I would like to understand why these funds, I know it's a very small amount, but in a department that is continually, you know, overtaxed, why can't these funds be put towards something in HHH? So, if I can, if somebody can send that information to us before the next hearing, I think that would be really helpful.
Counsel President, Counselor Feblecorn, we'd be happy to research that, get that information to you.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I would definitely not be in support of taking money away from Tenderlove. I also am researching a appropriation that this body, before I was a counselor, appropriated to them, that's never gotten to them either, out of HHH for 400,000. We had been working directly with the department on this issue because the provider felt like, they just feel like they're not getting the right services when it comes to contract management. So, this is something I've been talking to HHH directly about, and so, I would really love to find out what's going on as well.
Counselors, any other questions or comments? Counselor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, these were, when I went looking through the budget, this is what we found, and they said that it was sitting there for a while and non-ex, and weren't being executed. Also, found that it was already sponsored or set forth, that Locker 505 was set to get 75,000. So, I'm kind of curious on the idea that we're going to remove, that I'm re-appropriating 85, but they're already accounted for 75, and those numbers don't add up. So, it's another question that I'm kind of left in the air. But ultimately, too, I'm curious, because this was brought up, that there was an ordinance, and it was explained by our counsel. I am sponsoring another bill tonight. It's R. 1, or R. 25144, 141, that falls under this same issue. So, as this passes, or if this is going to pass and push to be deferred, I think we need to relook at 141, or have that in mind when we talk about 141 tonight, because it's appropriating funds, and there hasn't, and we are not apparently following ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Morrow?
And Counsel President Bassam, Counselor Champagne, it is correct that when we amend the budget for holdover or immediate action, we would need to defer to a second hearing.
Counsel, Counsel Grouse?
Thank you, Madam President. Locker 505 does, is really, really good, and they are in the middle of getting their contracts signed. They will, they will be using that money.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. It's the, what is it, the council sponsorship fund that we look at, you know, this is one of those ones that I have always suggested that we don't look at that when we're trying to find something else, it kind of tends to pit us against each other because we all, and, and, you know, there's projects in there that you actually looked at, and I appreciate, Counsel Champagne, actually, I went in and I talked to that nonprofit, there was like a hiccup between HHH, thinking it was for something else, and it was really for council sponsorships. So, they were, they were able to, I think, use it and are going to get it underway, as far as I know. So, I think it's important for our staff to remind us during the year of when some of these nonprofits aren't actually seeking their, seeking their funds. But I would just make a suggestion or a recommendation that we look at, you know, other areas of the budget rather than our council sponsorships. So, thank you.
Counselor Champagne, a close?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, to my fellow counselors, I agree. I'm not taking any away from Locker 505, they do a great job, I donated to them, so, I mean, I believe in it. This was something where, when we went and looked at it, it was items that hadn't been used, and by the time, there wasn't going to be enough time in to appropriately use them, and instead of losing them and then, in a sense, not following through with them, to re-appropriate it and being fiscally responsible to re-appropriate it to something that can be used. If it's turning out that the timing-wise is going to work out, that they can get it, then awesome. And again, because I don't want to raid those coffers, in a sense, because they were appropriated for those things. It's the ones where, like the 20, like the 25,000 saying that they denied it, in a sense, even looking at some of the reports that we got from the current ones, so, and again, the questions that pop up, if they're already allocated 75,000, I'm asking for 85,000, that where's the 10 in difference? So, that sort of thing. So, please don't think that I'm trying to take away from those ideas and such, or from a program that's working. So, with that being said, I know we're making a motion to pass, but I'd like to defer this to, to May 5th, then.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis. All those in favor of the deferral to May 5th for R. 136, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to announcements, Counselor Feblecorn?
Madam Chair, there will be a land use planning and zoning committee meeting on Wednesday, April 30th at 5:00 here in the Vincent E. Criego Chambers. It will be a hybrid meeting.
Counselor Grouse?
Madam President, there will be a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, May 1st, at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Criego Chambers, basement level of the Albuquerque Government Center. This will be a hybrid meeting.
Moving on to financial instruments, Counselor Sanchez, O. 82.
Thank you, Madam President. O. 82 approving a project involving Vitality Works, Inc., pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and City Ordinances, FS O. 0410. The city's implementing legislation for that act to support the expansion and modernization of vitality nutraceutical supplements. Got it. Essential oils and homeopathic products at Vitality Works facilities located in the city, authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and other documents in connection with the project, making certain determinations and findings relating to the project, including the appropriation of funds, ratifying certain actions taken previously, and repealing all actions inconsistent with the ordinance.
Economic Development staff is here to present tonight. Counselor, before we do that, do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion for a due pass.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second from Madam Vice President. Good evening, Director. We're going to pass it over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Counselors, Max Gruner, Director for Economic Development for the City of Albuquerque. Vitality Works is a company and a project that I've been working with for many, many years. This expansion had been on the horizon, and, you know, things happened, COVID and other such things. So, I'm so pleased that this company is now ready to make this expansion. I also just wanted to say, this is one of those true Albuquerque success stories, right? It's one of those stories that really points to, if you have a dream, if you have a twinkle in the eye, if you're willing to work hard, you can make amazing things work. And I would urge you all maybe to do a site visit to Vitality Works and meet with Mitch, the CEO. He came to New Mexico, he came to Albuquerque in the early 80s with an idea, and, you know, well, what is, as I'm trying to do the math, 45 years later, he's got a thriving company, over 300 employees, and just doing absolutely fantastic work, a good corporate neighbor. I mean, he's just such a good guy, and it's such a good company. So, we are here to help with some of the gap funding for this 5 million dollar expansion. The city is proposing to serve as the fiscal agent for 500,000 worth of state leader funding. The city would like to propose to contribute 100,000 through the Local Economic Development Act. And if it pleases, Madam President, my colleague, Chris Chavez, will continue with the formal staff analysis of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, Mr. Chavez.
Good evening, counselors. Thank you, Madam President, for this opportunity to bring this lead transaction before you today. As Max said, Vitality Works is a corporation that was founded and headquartered here, and we are seeking to provide 600,000, 500 from the state, and 100,000 from the city. The purpose of the proposed project is to expand their manufacturing capacity at their existing facility at 8,500 Blue Water Road. Vitality Works manufactures therapeutic herbal and vitamin and nutraceutical supplements. The expansion is required for continued sales growth in its custom and private labeling manufacturing operations. The expansion will, it'll expand their kettle room, build out a percolation room and a grinding room, remodel its processing and packaging areas, and build additional warehouse space, for a total of 35,000 new square feet, in addition to their 145,000 that they already have. They're located on 20 acres out on the west side. The IDO Zone District for the project is non-residential business park zone. The proposed use of the facility would not require zoning change. The company currently has over 300 full-time employees and plans to create another The company currently has over 300 full-time employees and plans to create another 18 positions with this expansion. The majority of these jobs will be filled by Albuquerque residents. These positions will be in production. They are considered full-time. They come with full employee benefits, medical, dental, vision, 401K. And then the salaries for the newly created jobs range from $35,000 to $70,000, with an average of over $46,000. The total capital investment for the construction on the project facility is north of $5 million. That's going to create over 28 construction jobs from local labor pool, as well as 13 indirect and induced jobs. The staff analysis includes a fiscal impact analysis provided by the state in New Mexico. That analysis shows that the company will be making a substantive contribution to the community. Overall, the city will receive approximately $1.75 million in net benefits over the 10-year period. Pretty good return for our $100,000. This project was presented at the February 20th Development Commission meeting and received unanimous recommendation. LEED 25-5 is a qualified project as defined by the state's Local Economic Development Act and city-enabling legislation. LEED 25-5 would make a positive substantive contribution to the local economy by creating 18 new jobs. This project complies with the adopted city plans and policies and meets economic development priorities and objectives. LEED 25-5 adequately meets the evaluation criteria established by the city for LEED projects. And based on these above findings, staff recommends approval of 25-5 as proposed in the project plan application. We do have Representative Beth Waldrip from the state of New Mexico, as well as John Priest with the company, and they'd like to say a few words, if that's okay?
That would be fine.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you. Just want to say thank you very much for giving me some time, excuse me, the weather here. Give me a little bit of time to speak tonight. Wanted to talk a little bit about Vitality Works, and, you know, how Max kind of touched on a little bit of how we came to Albuquerque. Mitch Kovan came to Albuquerque in 1982. He started a clinic with, you know, it was a multidisciplinary clinic where he treated patients of all sorts. And during that time, for 17 years, he actually treated patients, making herbal medicines and supplements. What a lot of people don't realize is companies like Bayer and Eli actually started in the same world, right? Aspirin that everybody loves today is a derivative of white willow bark. So what we're doing is, along those same lines, very traditional herbalism. And as Max said, 43 years later, which is an overnight success, right? And so it only takes 43 years, though. You know, so as we continue to grow, we're in 145,000 square feet with just over 300 employees, 22 acres of land that we sit on currently. And, you know, the staff that we have, we all have a collective quest for really developing the best wellness products and the most honest education. As you're aware, as a manufacturer, we're economic-based jobs, right? Depending on the source or really the industry, you can dial in the economic-based jobs to creating, for every economic-based job, seven to 16 indirect jobs in the city. Looking at what we do, 90% of our revenue comes from out of state. You know, we don't have to be in Albuquerque. We always have been because of the relationship and the support we've received from the city, the county, and the state have been phenomenal. You know, through J-Tip and LEED and high-wage job tax credits from the state, and, you know, you can name a bunch of other financial instruments that we've been able to take advantage of. Those wages, so that revenue that comes in, we pay wages to our employees. Those employees go out and buy food and clothes and shop and buy gas, and otherwise contribute to the tax system. So this current project is actually a project to expand our capabilities so we can hit this next phase of growth. We're seeing some pretty heavy demand from customers right now, and we're having a hard time, you know, keeping up. The, some of the money's going to be for infrastructure in the building. We don't have enough air, enough water, enough electricity, things of that nature. Some is going to be for remodel, some is going to be for renovation of the facility. We're in the old Honeywell Building from the early 80s, so it's about time for some of those renovations to happen as well.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. We're glad you're here. Thank you for that background. Ms. Waldrip? Welcome.
Madam Chair, I'm Beth Waldrip, Regional Representative for the State of New Mexico Economic Development. We are putting $500,000 of LEED dollars behind this project. This is our second LEED deal with Vitality Works. They continue to grow. They prospered during COVID and even grew even more than what they expected. So they're back again for LEED, and we appreciate your support with this. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I do see that Mr. Muirhead is in the background. I just have one quick question that can probably be handled with a quick nod. I didn't see a floor substitute, and I'm so used to those on things like this, with the whole update of exactly the pennies involved.
Yes, Madam President, Counsel. There's no, since the money and everything was said at introduction, there was no variables that had to be updated, so it is as introduced.
Thank you for the clarification on that. Counselors, any questions or comments? All right. Counsel Sanchez, to close?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just extremely excited that we have more Westside jobs, and that will save River Crossing, so hopefully we're working with Westside residents to get those Westside jobs. So thank you so much.
Counselors, the motion is for a due pass for O82. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Counsel.
We're going to move on to appeals, and then we're, just for those of you that are watching, we'll take our break after this appeal. AC 2501 is five appellants. The Santa Fe Village Neighborhood Association, Westside Coalition of Neighborhood Associations, and the Native American Voters Alliance, a nonprofit organization, and individuals. Jane Beckley and Michael T. Voorhees appeal the Environmental Planning Commission decision to approve a site plan for the Mesa Film Studio proposed for Double Eagle Two Airport Lease Area Two. I'm going to skip some of all of that. Located at 7401 Paseo del Volcán Northwest, Attrisco Vista Boulevard Northwest, and Shooting Range Access Drive Intersection, approximately 4,100 acres. Ms. Kulidon is here to explain the proposed findings that was voted upon at the last meeting. Ms. Kulidon?
Thank you, Madam President. At our April 7th meeting, following a full hearing on this appeal, the council voted unanimously to deny the appeal and uphold the EPC's decision to approve the site plan for the Mesa Film Studio proposed at the Double Eagle Two Airport property, adopt the EPC findings, and then adopt additional findings that will be approved at this council meeting. Those findings have been drafted and were made available to you last week on OneDrive, and were also provided to the parties. Just to briefly summarize those, the findings address that the appellants did not have standing to bring the appeal. The appellants did not meet their burden of proof on the appeal. The council supports the Planning Department's interpretation of the IDO as to the NRSU Zone District, and then the proposed findings bolster some of the EPC's findings that were at issue in the appeal, specifically that the film studio is compatible with and complementary to the primary use, and the film studio is subordinate in use area or purpose to the airport use. And those are, again, on your iPads for review.
Thank you. Counsel Lewis?
Madam President, I move adoption of findings for AC 2501.
There's a motion and a second by Counsel Champagne. Counselors, any questions or comments? All right. The motion is for, a motion to adopt the findings for AC 2501. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes? Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselors? I normally don't do this, but that got done a lot faster than I thought. We have about 30 minutes of public comment. Can we go ahead and do that? Can y'all, I know Counsel Baca gets hungry. 30 minutes, so that the people that have waited don't have to wait for us to eat before they go eat. So we're going to move on to general public comment tonight, so that way you all can enjoy your evening, or stay with us. You never know what's going to happen. Moving on to general public comments, members of the public can provide live public comment to the council in person or virtually if they have signed up for public comment per the instructions published on the agenda and on our website Friday. The public comment ground rules are two minutes for each participant to speak. Comments are to be addressed to the counselors only through the council president, and any disruptive conduct will result in removal from the meeting. When the two-minute time limit is up, a bell will ring to indicate your time is up. Mr. Cornelius?
Thank you, Madam President. I have Lisa Christopherson, and we already went through Loretta Naronho Lopez. But after her is Jane Beckley.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Counselors. My name is Lisa Christopherson. I'm in District 3, Counselor Peña's district. I'm here to talk about fascism and our civil rights, and my concern that, given the federal state of things, that the protection that you all can provide for us here in this city is what I'm here to implore you for. So fascism gains a foothold by centimeters at first, normalizing what is really not okay. And then we get this condition of apathy and coldness, dehumanizing people and groups, which make it much easier to make policy and practice that impacts an entire group versus looking at individual humans and their needs. So when we fail to feel sadness for another's plight, we inch ever closer toward that rationalization and the excuses that bring fascism or allow fascism. So collectively, we have power, and we can unite for good together. Similarly, there are weaker forces that are also uniting for the detriment of our city. So I stand here today to implore you, our city leaders and the city administration, to help us understand why it is necessary to have trained military stationed on our civilian streets. I ask because humans experiencing being unhoused cannot be treated with a blanket policy that applies to everyone that is unhoused, because folks who are on the streets are there for different reasons. Trauma-informed interactions are what we need. This state is 50th in child well-being. So I would ask, the governor needs to also explain. Anyways, all of that to say, what can we do as a city? So myself, just to let you all know, you two weeks ago just paid me for the APD giving me a concussion, slamming my head on the ground. You paid for my two ribs, and you paid for my fractured back. So I ask, again, how are you going to keep us safe?
Mr. Cornelius, hold on one moment, please. Ms. Naronho Lopez, we let you speak earlier instead of right now, just so that you know. That's when we pulled you up for consent agenda for the bill. And so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Okay, so next time, we won't pull up people to speak on consent agenda. Ms. Naronho Lopez, you have two minutes.
President and members of the council, I just wanted to state that we were not allowed due process to be heard in front of the Development Commission and the Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee or the City Council. The Opens Meetings Act is, was not followed, and it's clear because we were never informed of, none of these meetings that happened for R25-123, never informed. We also, under the H22, 2022 HND-EEF plan, the city had done stated that our area is being gentified, and we are asking you to stop this abuse of our neighborhood and find solutions instead of taking away our grocery receipt taxes that come from Burger King and whatever's going to be developed at 220 Broadway Northeast. We want it for our neighborhood. We want the economic opportunities, just like you want it on your east side, west side. We want the same. So we didn't understand how you could make a vote to take away our MRA boundaries, our neighborhood boundaries, and give it to another location of downtown. Let me see what else I didn't mention. I want to make sure that. There's no benefit to remove those portions of property for us to have it removed. We want it to benefit our neighborhood, and we want to save. We live in the neighborhood, so we should have a say of what happens. So I think, I want to just thank you for this opportunity to go over some of the things that I left out. But the record is very clear. It's in the minutes we spoke about it, and it was very clear that they had, the Albuquerque Development Commission did not hear the CV, the case 2410. And so I think that there's a lot of violations that you need to see that you did. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. So Kevin, just a quick question. So were the neighborhoods notified? And it says the Albuquerque Development Commission did vote on it. I know earlier Ms. Naronho had said that they didn't. But, so can you just give me some more background on this?
Certainly. Counsel President Bassam, Counsel Peña, our research this afternoon with Ms. Kulidon and revealed, as actually Ms. Naronho Lopez mentioned, that the Santa Barbara Maristina's Town Neighborhood Association did speak at the ADC about the inclusion of these two properties in the downtown metropolitan redevelopment area.
So they were, Madam President, so they were noticed and did have an opportunity?
That is my understanding, based on the minutes that we reviewed.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Cornelius?
Thank you, Madam President. Up next is Jane Beckley, followed by Walter Treadwell.
Madam President and Counselors, my comments tonight are my own. I begin with a quote from my comments to the council on August 21st of 2023. Quote, "It has been popular in some circles to villainize neighborhood associations, to characterize them as obstacles to perceived progress and development rather than essential to engaging the community in social change, bridging the gap between government and citizens, offering citizens a stronger role in their communities, and promoting collaborative planning," as cited by the NARO, end quote. "That seems to remain the narrative used to justify hostility to neighborhood groups, evidence reassertions their practices are undemocratic, and pejorative insinuations that officers benefit financially from their service. But individually and collectively, the people I know, my neighbors, have and will join CPA assessments, every opportunity to participate in the IDO review, ONC neighborhood walks, and city-sponsored cleanups, as we did on April 12th. We will host neighborhood night out events, inviting our elected officials and first responders. We will join facilitated meetings, ZHE and EPC hearings to advocate for context-sensitive development, protection of cultural landscapes, and IDO implementation of the comp plan. We will meet our NARO responsibilities, quote, 'by interaction with their members, residents in the city strive to engage with community and land use planning, protect the environment, and promote the community welfare,' end quote." I close my comments in 2023 with this, quote, "In just over four months, a new council will be seated here. It is our fervent hope that its members will engage with us at the ENA and all neighborhood associations in the spirit of collaboration set forth in the NARO. That is still our hope. We, however, will continue to show up whenever we have the opportunity." Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Walter Treadwell, followed by Carlos Vasquez. Carlos Vasquez, followed by Ernest Sturdvent.
Hello, Madam President and Counselors. I would like to bring something to your attention about the homeless problem here in the city. I would like to mention that this became a problem ever since I started to go to CNN for me. I didn't really pay too much attention until it became, started to affect me, not only for me, but for my peers, and I feel like I should stand up in behalf of my friends and them. And that they also had to constantly walk back from CNN to their home, having to face these homeless, having to constantly be, sometimes in fear of them potentially harassing them or an attack on them. Not only that, but also, it also ruins the reputation of UNM and CNN. As much as I love these colleges, I would love other states to see how important this university and college would be, but the homeless problem around it, also the smoke shops being like a point where homeless people will be around, would really ruin the reputation of this wonderful university and college that we have here in New Mexico. My suggestion for this would be to either gate campuses to avoid... gate campuses to avoid students being harassed by homeless around campus, because I see them all the time roaming around campus and not much action is done. Or make it illegal to be under the influence of drugs or to be caught under the influence of drugs here in Albuquerque. This has become a much big problem here. And if they ever were to be caught by the police, to be under, to be taken into rehab for at least six months. And I know there's a lot of resources, but these homeless people just don't want to. So we got to find a way how to establish something that would make them stay so they can get out of this drug addiction that they have. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ernest Sturdevent, followed by Robert Castillo. Robert Castillo, followed by Letz Atvo.
Madam President, nice to see you again. Councilor Rogers, Councilor Baca, nice to see you. Esteemed counselors, thank you for your service. I'm here to say that I stand against fascism. And the name of my first piece, Why Write Poetry? So the name of my first piece is I Stand with Kilmar. Do you remember the verses in the Bible where Jesus says, "Deport that immigrant, told the leper, change your spots." Told the homeless, "Hey, sink or swim, you're not my problem." Do you remember those verses in the Bible? Yeah, me either. And my second piece is untitled, but I think it applies to what we're going through right now. And it ties it to what has happened in the past as well. So during the times of Pharaoh, when the Lord was in plagues and natural disasters, he was addressing the leaders of Egypt because of oppression. And even to this day, through the suppression of the vote, to continue the bondage of slavery through minimum wage and the right-to-work state, we can actually see you bearing your profits like the stolen treasure that it actually is. Thank you for your time.
Letz Atvo, followed by Brick Jonasie.
Madam President, Councilmembers, your ability to have free speech in a free world is important. Free speech is the first line of defense against tyranny. Without free speech, cronyism and corruption goes unchallenged. Abuse goes unchecked and the power becomes absolute. Even small restrictions of speech can be dangerous. I would like to take note that public comment, from what I understand, is a time for the public to make comments. I do understand that the council president's discretion, she can give council members an opportunity to clarify questions during public comment, but I would encourage council members to refrain from adding comments during public comment. Because the freedom of speech is vital at a city council meeting because it allows citizens to actively participate in their government, voice their concerns, and influence policy decisions. It's a fundamental element of a healthy democracy, enabling citizens to hold their elected officials accountable and contribute to the decision-making process. It can strengthen the democracy. It can empower its citizens. It can facilitate informed decision-making. It can promote accountability. It can prevent tyranny and abuse of power. It can encourage citizens to discourse. It can ensure public access to information. We have this system here that allows the public to view you folks today. You need to turn on public comment on this YouTube channel. You are content creators. Thank you.
Brick Jonasie, followed by Natalie Dositer.
Nina Toll or Mike? Number one. So I heard it was said that you, well, APD requested that the National Guard unit will be deployed throughout the city. That's interesting. It sounds like your officers and the chief pretty much sucks at their job. Funny thing is, I came from one of the most dangerous cities in the U.S., one that used to be actually called the murder capital. That city never needed military troops in the city limits during that time. Hmm, that's interesting. It's still, that city's still here. We didn't plunge into World War III. Besides, it's really, it really falls down to your chief sucks. The claim is that he nor any of your officers sign oaths. They don't sign oaths to work for that department is the claim. The problem here is loyalty. The loyalty oath is a legal requirement, a sacred honor. What makes them believe that they are above the law? Is it the shiny badge? Is it the gun? Either way, understand one thing, the people are out there. No matter what declared emergency you claim, understand that the people's rights are more important than whatever random crime you or the guard may come across. The people's Second Amendment is still intact. Don't forget that one. Do not turn this city into a war zone. Your police are already militarized. Your police are already militarized and they already look like jackboot thug pigs. And they still can't do the job properly. Yeah. And also, you know, that public comment thing from before, yeah, that would be super beneficial. I know that Google reviews all the police departments across the nation. All these government agencies are turning the comments off on the YouTube channels. You're not allowing us to make our voices heard. Allow that.
Natalie Dositer, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, followed by Anami Das.
Hello, Madam President and Counselors. I have never been to a city council before, so please excuse my informality or lack of. I have a granddaughter. Her name is Anastasia Ferreira. She is missing. She has been missing for over two years now. When she went missing, I decided to look into it and see how many women were actually missing since we did at one time have a serial killer. And we didn't know about it until a dog found a bone. When I looked into the Department of Public Safety, I found out at the time there were about 33 girls. I wasn't interested in the men because I was looking for my granddaughter. She was 19 years old, little tiny, petite little thing. While I was looking through that, there were 33 girls that were missing, girls or women missing at that time. I've decided to, in two years, I've decided to keep track of everybody who's missing in Albuquerque. We currently have over 300 people missing in Albuquerque, and I don't think that any of you are really aware of that. From 1947 to 2020, there were 42 people that were missing, okay? 78 people. In 78 years, there were only 42 people missing. 2020, there were, there are still four people missing. 2021, nine people missing. 2022, 11. 2023, 52. 2024, 113. 2025, in the last four months, there are 99 people missing, men and women. I am asking, I am trying to find somebody to look after these missing people and to please help us to put them on the news. It was very difficult for me. We were finally able to put her on the news after a year of looking for her.
Thank you, ma'am.
We can't find anybody to help.
We allow her to finish if she's not done, ma'am.
Thank you. Were you done, ma'am? I'm sorry for your loss. Council Lewis?
Can I ask a question of the?
Go ahead, Council Lewis.
Ma'am, I'm interested to just know the list that you're, how you're finding, just because I'm interested in looking at it.
It is through the DPS, the New Mexico website.
Yeah.
The Department of, Department of Public Safety.
I'm looking at that, I'm looking at that website, yeah, and it has the different sections of it.
If you just put Albuquerque, you will have an entire list.
Okay.
Of who is missing. I've gone through that list. I've tried to find out, like, what do all these people have in common? It's not men versus women. It's almost the same amount of men as women that are missing, young and old. What I did find, that most of the young people that are missing are mostly runaways, I would, I would assume. And I tried calling the human services because the younger people, we don't have pictures of them. And with the state that we're in, we should have a million pictures of them, you know? I mean, we all have teenagers. They have millions of pictures. But what I asked, you know, through human services is, you know, I did work for the state. And so I know that when you have something in your care, you don't take a picture of them. It would be that simple for them to just take a headshot of that child, that we have that for the public safety to put on their poster. Because the public safety is supposed to contact the media. They are not. They're not contacting the media. I don't know if you all have seen anybody missing lately on the news. I know I haven't.
Council Lewis.
Madam President, and so in the 90 or so that you said were missing since January?
Mm-hmm.
That's in 2025, and that's on the, that's on the registry or two?
Yes, that's on there. And it's not that. You have to go person by, you have to go person by person.
Yeah, I'm already finding that. I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to get there and to see that. And I'm assuming there's not, there's not pictures of them on here either.
You know, like I said, most of them, a lot of them do have pictures. The younger people hardly have any pictures. But there are, it has their birthday, it has their weight, it has when they went missing, it has whether their headshot that they have on there was like a year old when it was that picture of them was taken. That way you know, well, you know, the picture was taken two years ago and they could have changed the way they left.
Well, I mean, thank you for letting us be aware of some of that. Honestly, I want to find out more about it and how, you know, we could be of help.
I just need a liaison. I just want somebody who cares.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks for, I mean, the courage to come down here tonight. And I mean, it's super helpful information to us and something I wanted to look into a lot more.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Give more help. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Council Rogers.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say so sorry for what you're dealing with. We do have an APD. I think some of the reason why you're seeing more increase in the amount of numbers is our Equity and Inclusion Department through our Native American Affairs worked with APD and specifically on murdered and missing Indigenous women and relatives. But some of that work that they did there to make sure all of the law enforcement agencies were talking to each other, we learned some very important things that I think are important for the public to know. There is not a state law or a city ordinance that says we have to wait 48 hours before you can report somebody missing. That was the staggering information that we learned during that time that you often hear, especially if it's an adult, you have to wait 48 hours to report them missing. There is no such law. So that's really important for family members to know when you're reporting, that you be forceful. And obviously, this is good information for people moving forward. But part of that work was also to not just talk about missing and murdered Indigenous folks, but to look at how law enforcement agencies are listing these things on the websites, including pictures. That has really helped. So I'd like to put you in contact too with Gerard Butler at APD. He's the ambassador that really worked on this project.
Okay.
And because there are people who care and who are working on this right now in APD because it is a big issue. The lack of reporting is one of those issues. So I would love to get your ideas to that task force that's working on this right now.
Okay.
Because you're exactly right. There's some things we can do within law enforcement and reporting that your expertise and your lived experience could really help. I would love to do that.
Thank you, ma'am, so much for being here. I'm sorry for your circumstance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cornelius.
Thank you, Madam President. Up next, we have Anami Das, followed by M. Ward.
Hi, y'all. Council President, I like your sweater today. The conversation around accountability in policing and like reporting and stuff. I saw an article about how the chief wants the, I'm going to say the name of the case wrong, but the McLendon settlement dismissed. And I remember last year, there was a lot of talk about the consent decree with the DOJ as though it were like an inconvenience. And it's just more accountability. If you look at the statistics that are available on MDC's data dashboard relating to transient inmates, you could see that there's been a very steady and very consistent rise in the representation of homeless people in the local jail. APD's, like I checked earlier today, it was something like 56% of the people who are brought to MDC by APD are classified as transient. And there's some caveat that the city attorney typically will provide at that point. I'll let her do that whenever. The point that I'm trying to make is that we need things like body cams. We need things like cop watchers. As annoying as it might be to constantly be under surveillance, that's how we feel. And I hope that cops can understand how we in the public need to be able to see what's going on and keep track of that sort of thing if there's going to be any kind of positive relationship with police moving forward. Thanks, y'all.
M. Ward, followed by Sarah Azibo on Zoom.
Good evening, Madam President, Counselors. The general disregard for the rule of law and public and fair processes that has overtaken the federal government appears to have become well-settled in this city. How many times does a court have to figuratively slap the city's wrist and tell it to get its act together before the city follows its own ordinances and state statutes from the outset? I have to say that I was a bit stunned tonight that this body considered or reconsidered actions because of concern about violating an ordinance. With the continual turnover in city staff and loss of historical memory, it is extremely important to emphasize the study of the ordinances and tenets of public service. Instead of pretending that some imagined obstacles to achieve some unproved payoff should be removed irrespective of proper and inclusive procedures. And I'm going to switch gears, sort of, and a lot has been made of the National Guard coming from the governor's office. And I just want to remind everyone that May 8th will be the 55th anniversary of the last time the National Guard was sent from the office of the governor, it was actually the lieutenant governor, to the city of Albuquerque to help. Peaceful protesters at the University of New Mexico were attacked. Several people were bayoneted. And it was, this happened on campus in Albuquerque, May 8th, 1970. There are survivors. Some have, like, one of the persons was, well, I've got five seconds. So the people will be watching and we will be acting if needed. Thank you.
Sarah Azibo, followed by Angela V. Hill.
Hello, Council President and members of the council. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I couldn't get my camera on. I'm Sarah Azibo, resident of District Two. I learned on Saturday that a woman I knew recently died in Albuquerque. She didn't die peacefully in her home. She didn't die peacefully in her home because she didn't have one. She was a brave, funny, creative, and resilient sister, mother, and friend. One year ago, she had hope of getting a home through the city-sponsored, city-funded Utah Chico Hotel voucher pilot program. But that failed her. We failed her. Hammer the homeless was Mayor Keller's directive to Chief Medina. It's the phrase that rings in my ear when I hear of people dying. Ordinances targeting people with no homes are proposed and passed by this council. Hammer the homeless is what I think of each time a property-owning neighbor's 311 call results in a cruel city-sanctioned displacement of people with no homes and theft of their belongings by solid waste. Hammer the homeless is what is occurring when people surviving on the streets are taken to MDC and when the National Guard is called in for a state of emergency to address crime along Central. I'm here tonight to ask you to use the tools within your power to create or require the city to create an actual proactive, humane, solutions-based policy, a multi-year plan that will extend beyond your term as councilors. How is it that so much funding, so many resources are approved without a long-term plan? Currently, APS high school students are developing proactive plans to support youth who are homeless and moving toward housing. This is not their job. This is what I am asking you to do as city leaders. We deserve a plan that will hold the city of Albuquerque accountable for proactively addressing the root causes of homelessness for everyone without punishing and further harming people who are homeless. We need a plan that will result in homes and opportunity for all people, especially those who cannot be in shelters or don't want to be in a shelter with lice, bedbugs, and scabies presently current. I have the beginnings of such a plan and welcome your collaboration. Our community is suffering and resources are being wasted in these reactionary responses. We need a plan before more women, children, people die in our streets. On another note, I urge you to support in pressuring the mayor's office to drop the case against quirky used books and more. A lengthy court battle will not address the root of this problem, and this private business is stepping up with compassion where the city is not. Enjoy your night.
Angela V. Hill, followed by James Hoffman.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Angela. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this time. My name is Angela V. Hill and I own, excuse me, I own a property in Martinez Town. Um, I'm, I want to talk to you about the property on Lomas and Broadway. It belongs to Martinez Town. It has always been part of Martinez Town. And we want it to stay in, in Martinez Town. We want our boundaries to stay the same. We don't want any part of our land in Martinez Town to be part of the downtown corridor. So I had to come talk to you about this. Hopefully you will listen. Also, um, the Open Meetings Act was violated when on April 7th, the city denied include Martinez Town boundaries of 101 Lomas and 220 Broadway Northeast. The association asked specifically at the Albuquerque Development Commission on December 24th hearing that 101 Lomas Northeast and 200 Broadway were not included in the decision and on record as it was stated that it had been included. Um, we were not on the agenda. It was not voted on to move to City Council. And the Neighborhood Association was not informed about any meetings to vote to include these properties in the downtown neighborhood. So I guess that's pretty much it. We, we just really want you to help us out here and keep our property in Martinez Town as is and not make it part of downtown because we are not part of downtown. Our family has been in Martinez Town for generations, and we want our land to remain the same. Thank you very much for your time.
James Hoffman, followed by Mark Bylone.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, James. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'm commenting on R. 131, which you'll be hearing later tonight for the priority projects to be included in the 2045 MTP. The public comment period on the MTP at the COG closed on March 30th. Uh, I made public comment at that time, as well as at the April 4th TCC meeting, that the Volcano Heights Transit Boulevard, which was included in the 2040 MTP as a publicly funded project, had been omitted. Uh, the TCC, uh, the COG, they apparently agreed. They, they have added the Volcano Heights Transit Boulevard in the 2045 MTP, uh, but as a privately funded project. I don't feel that that is appropriate, that a few landowners in Volcano Heights pay for a transit-oriented project. I think that's just probably an oversight again, um, that a carryover should be, as a publicly funded project from the 2040 MTP. And the COG will be hearing the final MTP on April 25th later this week. Um, I'm asking for a floor amendment tonight to include the Volcano Heights Transit Boulevard as a publicly funded project for potential public funding in the 2045 MTP. Uh, thank you very much.
Mark Bylone, followed by John Edward.
Good evening, council, council president. Um, I just wanted to take a little bit of time today to remark on shared active transit here in the city. Um, as somebody who lives extremely close to Old Town, I've noticed a remarkable increase in people enjoying the electric scooters. Uh, and it's brought a nice vibrancy to the area that I'm sure will only increase as weather continues to be pleasant. Also, as the rail trail gets completed, along with the new various improvements to bike infrastructure that are no doubt on the way, um, we will continue to see residents and tourists alike enjoy getting around via these shared active transit options. Um, I do wish there was more effort on the side of the scooter companies to make sure that the scooters aren't just strewn about and that, um, locations for the scooters are extremely well-marked, I would say. Um, but I'm also just happy to see people out and about. Uh, and I hope that we can continue to support microtransit and the electrification of our transit options going forward. Switching gears completely, um, I wanted to also quickly say that I think that uh, using tax dollars to do stuff is, to capital D, do stuff is pretty cool. Um, and that we should be willing as a society to pony up for some cool stuff, uh, that we want funded via our public funds. Um, and I think that, uh, we should continue to promote local resiliency via our tax dollars and not be so beholden to the federal government, given how funding can be shifted and moved around so willy-nilly as we've seen over the past couple of months. Um, and then lastly, I just want to say that the National Guard being down here is pretty whack, uh, especially when violent crime is down here statistically. So, uh, but that's it. Thank you so much.
John Edward.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, John. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, councilors, um, there's a item you're going to be hearing tonight. Um, it's Item 131. It's a resolution concerning the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And there's a road in there that has, um, historically been on the list. Uh, Transit Boulevard, part of a transit plan, serving a walkable, uh, development area and an urban area. And, uh, these things go hand in hand, and somehow it's been relegated to the private funding to the extent that that's the case. I don't think that that's probably the accurate thing to do. I realize that, uh, people, the city government are a little overwhelmed with a shortage of staff and errors and mistakes can be made. But I think it should be put back on as a publicly funded project, so that it can, uh, serve the future needs of the West Side and the greater Albuquerque area. And if you can make an amendment to that effect, uh, for this evening, that would be great as the organization is going to be hearing, um, their, um, MTP plan, um, this, uh, week, um, which is Friday, the 25th. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam President, that concludes general public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to take a break and be back at 5:00 after 8:00. Welcome back, everyone, from dinner. I call this meeting back to order. We're on approvals. Everyone's working their way in from the break, but we are all here again. We're on approvals. EC 360 is approval of the second supplemental agreement to the Farolito Senior Community Development Agreement with Soul Housing to utilize ARPA funds towards the new construction of a senior rental housing project. I move approval.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and multiple approvals, or seconds. Councilors, is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of approving EC 360, please raise your hand and say yes. It looks like Councilors Rogers, Baca, and Lewis are still working their way back and excused for the moment. That passes on a 6-0 vote. EC 361 is approval of the agreement to the Sumos Apartments Development Agreement with Soul Housing to utilize HUD, Home, and ARPA Treasury funds towards the new construction of a senior rental housing project. I move approval. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Grouse. Councilors, any questions or comments? Councilor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I asked about the, this is, it's a $1 million gap and it raised the cost. Uh, why, what, what's the reasoning between the money being requested?
I see.
Yes.
Director coming down here. Want him to answer? Okay. Director?
Madam Chair, excuse me, I didn't hear the question.
Does the reasoning be by the cost, the reasoning for the cost and the gap?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, so we only provide gap financing, is all we do. We don't have the ability to provide 100% of financing. Generally speaking, we provide actually less than 25% of the total amount of funding that's available. So all the other funding comes from different sources, whether it be tax credits, um, uh, housing trust funds, uh, state housing trust funds, things of that nature. So there's generally a gap in terms of these kind of processes, and we try to fill that gap.
And what is this gap, Madam President?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, the gap is the total amount of funds that we provided.
I, I understand that, but what is this money going toward? It's a gap of what? Is it construction cost? Is it, what is the reasoning?
My apologies. My apologies.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's, it is for the construction of the development.
Madam President, was there a, a missed bid? Did they bid it too low? Was it, you know, copper wire rose? So of course the cost rose. Do we have any details of what this is?
Madam Chair, because, yes, we actually have quite a few details in terms of, remember, this was written some time ago. Now, in general, right, there's been a lot of extra expenses that have come into play, such as lack of labor, uh, interest rate variabilities, uh, higher construction costs. That being said, right, all the developments that we provide financing for always have a gap. We try to be able to fill those gaps because we are not the ones who provide 100% of the finance.
Is there, Madam President, is there any delay in this project then because of this gap, this lack of $1 million?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, um, with this funds, the developments will be able to move forward. There are, um, now, expenses come up. There's some negotiations going on. However, relative to the funds that we are able to provide, this will be it.
And one last question, Madam President. The, um, commercial square footage, footage ratio. I believe the requirement was, was 10,000 square feet, um, or there's another option. What was the other option that you guys, because you only accounted for 1,000 square feet on the commercial ratio side?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, so just to be clear, for the most part, we don't provide the funding for the commercial side of it. So that's what the variability, there's a variability there. If you want very specific details on the commercial side of this development, um, we have the developer here that can answer this very specific questions.
Madam President, if you could allow the other speaker?
Who is that?
Felipe Rayo.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. What, who?
Felipe Rayo, the director of Soul Housing.
Thank you. Mr. Rayo?
Madam President, Commissioner Champagne, uh, I see kind of two open questions. Um, I'll speak specifically on the square footage. The, the form of this project was determined for a request for proposals put out by the Metropolitan Redevelopment Agency. Uh, this site was, has been city-owned for over 20 years. Uh, this is just east of the Talin Market, uh, just west of the Cinnamon Tree. And it's, was a former, I think, Blue Spruce Lounge. Um, and has been, the city bought it, tore it down. Um, and so part of the redevelopment was to, uh, contribute back to that greater master plan of the community. The minimum was the 1,000 square feet. We're hoping to do a little bit more than that. But the financing structure that we're using, low-income housing tax credits as the primary funding structure, there's some specific limitations on the amount. I'm not aware of that 10,000 square foot where, where that came through. I did, I read through, but did not read all 420 pages, uh, since Friday of the, uh, of the legislation. But I keyed into the development agreement portion in the first few pages. Uh, but we will contribute more, or look to more than 1,000 square foot to try and incubate bases kind of by and for, uh, from the International District. You asked a little bit, questioned a little bit on the, the gap financing. We responded to this request for proposals for the ARPA funds, the $1 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds, coronavirus relief recovery funds, that was specifically came down from the governor's office through the Department of Health, Housing, and Human Services. We responded to an RFP and kind of showed, uh, the, the increases. There's been quite a bit of, of time since that RFP opened and closed. It was issued May 31st of 2024. We responded by the deadline of July 31st and received a response in August. Uh, since that date, we've been working towards with our contractor. Uh, we've received building permit approval in February. This is the last bit of financing, uh, that we need on this. And we're looking to, uh, release the notice to proceed to our contractor and begin construction in May of this year. So we're shovel-ready and just need this, this last bit of financing and approval and support from the City Council this evening.
And Madam President, just for your information, the state statute, Section 3, Article 60A of, of the MRP states a minimum of 10,000 square feet for commercial spaces to create or put into active use must be currently vacant and hard to construction cost should be, and have been permitted. So that's where I pulled that from, was the, thank you, Madam President.
Councilors, any other questions or comments? The motion is for approval on EC 361. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. EC 368 is mayor's recommendation of award for human resources flexible spending accounts administration. I move approval. There's a second from Councilor Rogers. Councilors, any questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is for approval on EC 368. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. EC 369 is mayor's recommendation for award for human resources, basic life, supplemental life, long and short-term disability insurance. I move approval. There's a second from Councilor Feeblecorn. Any questions or comments? Councilor Grouse?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. Why are we just seeing this, um, in April for immediate action?
Mr. Soroso? Or did you want me to go to Director Stoker?
President, President Hassan and, um, Councilor Grouse, I would defer to Director Stoker.
Director?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Councilor Grouse. The importance of, or the reason we're asking for immediate action at this point is so that we can provide this benefit or make it explained to our employees in time for our open enrollment season, which will begin on May 8th.
I understand, I understand. Thank you, Madam Chair, President. I do under- I do understand that, but why are we just now getting this now? If it's due May 8, which I understand, why didn't we see this in January or February? And then that way, it can go through the process and we can digest it a little bit better than immediate action. That is why.
Madam President, Counselor Grouse, amongst the various insurance benefits that we offer, life insurance is easily the most complicated. So, we did begin the process with the RFP, I believe, in August of last year, and it took quite a while to formulate the proper request for proposal and then go through the process of selecting a provider.
Okay, so, it sounds, I still, I still think if it's taking this long, then we should start the process earlier than if it's going to take that long, because immediate action, to me, means we didn't get on this fast enough. I need to, we're seeing that a lot, and I don't understand why. There's a lot of people in your department working, and so I just, I just think that there needs to be, we should be more efficient in giving us more time to look into things. I understand the need for it, and I do support it. I just don't like immediate action all the time. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of questions. Out of curiosity, why wasn't the top number chosen, the top group of this RFP chosen?
Director?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, the simplest answer is that the Mutual of Omaha is our incumbent provider, so we have an established relationship with them. And in the same way that life insurance is one of the most complicated proposals for us to produce, it is also the most complicated benefit system for us to administer. It takes a heavy lift to enter all of the rate plans and various other pieces of information necessary in our system in order to make that, for our employees to sign up. So, there is a significant administrative advantage to us in retaining the incumbent.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, just, the public, Madam President, the purchase, the public purchase ordinance of 5530 prohibits the selecting of the second highest scoring? So, how is it that we can circumvent that? Because we have a relationship with them, or?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, to my knowledge, we are not required to select the highest-scoring candidate and can, in fact, choose another one.
Madam President?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, the ordinance does not prohibit it, prohibit them from selecting the second highest, they just have to have a reason for it. And so, probably may want to ask for the reason.
The reason was the relationship, is what you stated earlier? Is that correct?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, not only the relationship, but also the administrative efficiency, so that we would not have to build out the new rate plans in our system. Had we not gone with the incumbent provider, it's almost certain that we would not have had the benefit ready in time for open enrollment.
Madam President, one last question. There was, on the RFP and the results, there was a section that was zeros across the board on all of it. Is there a reason for that?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, I believe that in the executive communication that went down to you all, the cost scoring portion was accidentally omitted. So, that was information that the selection committee had before them when they made their selection. Had it been included, it would have shown that Dearborn was a total score of 847 and a half, Mutual of Omaha was a total score of 781 and a quarter, and Standard had a total score of 717 and a half.
God bless you. Madam President, that's a large gap between first and second, so I hope that's a strong relationship. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselors, any other questions or comments? Anything else from the administration? The motion is for approval of EC 369. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes on an eight-to-one vote. EC 374 is request for authorization to establish a professional service agreement with Youth Development Incorporated, YDI, to provide family, Gateway Family Housing Navigation. I move approval. There's a motion and a second by Madam Vice President. Counselors, any questions or comments? Counselor Grouse?
Thank you, Madam President. Why are we asking for immediate action?
I thought you might ask, Madam President, Counselor Grouse, thanks for that question. We went out to RFP twice for this particular service and just really didn't have anybody respond to it, so it took us that long to go out to RFP both of those times. And then to be able to get to a place where we could bring a provider to you that we felt like was competent to do it and we had a contract ready, it took us this long.
Okay, thanks. No one responded, I know that that's what you just said, too. How do we know we got the best price?
Madam President, Counselor Grouse, good question. So, we, I worked through some details and thinking through that question that you gave us, and one of the ideas that we had around this is that because we had no respondents, we went into direct conversations with the providers that we're working with, and in conversations with those providers, this is what they needed in order to execute the contract. This is also what was allocated in the previous contract, and so we decided to go forward with that particular amount, and that's what's in the budget.
Okay, thank you. Madam President, a couple more questions. We've also, you told us that YDI has been selected to run the Youth Navigation Center, which I'm thrilled about, and I know their counselors are as well. Will you be sending this down soon, or will we get another immediate action request?
Madam President, Counselor Grouse, we likely will not come forward with an immediate action for that request. Once we have a determination on when we're going to start, then we'll start the process in time to be able to get that contract through.
Thank you. It would be great if we could get that before we go on break in the end of June, you know, so it'll be ready and rock and roll in September, because I know that's when it's anticipating openings, so, thank you. Thank you. That's all, Madam President. Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions or comments? The motion is for approval of EC 374. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes on a nine-zero vote. EC 375 is request authorization to establish a professional service agreement with Chicanos Por la Casa to provide Gateway Women's Housing Navigation. I move approval. There's a second from Madam Vice President. Counselors, any questions or comments? Counselor Grouse?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have questions on this one. How many responses did we get for this RFP?
This was for our women's, we didn't get any responses, sorry, Madam President, Counselor Grouse, we didn't get responses for this one either, and similar to the women, to the family shelter.
Okay. Is this the best obtainable cost for this one?
Counselor, President Bassan, Counselor Grouse, yes, similar answer to the one before where we went into direct contact with the provider, and because this was budgeted from the year before, that's the cost that we went with. In working with the provider, understanding the cost allocation in terms of staffing and security and all of those things, this is the cost that they gave us.
Madam President, how many employees does this company have in Albuquerque?
So, President Bassan, Counselor Grouse, actually, CPLC has been in New Mexico for 15 years. They've been operating under, they allowed Help New Mexico to maintain their name, but they oversee Help New Mexico, it's part of their umbrella organization, and so I can find out for you how many employees they have under that organization, but it's quite a few. They also run our West Side Shelter, as you know, and I would say there's about 40 employees there for, right now.
Thank you. The reason I ask is because I know that there is, they have a, they have two contracts out at the West Side Shelter, one is to run it and one is for case management, that we approved a contract for them, but they have not yet filled, and we're now in April, and it's been six months. We've also been told that there is no case management out there for people under 60. I've been told that by a few people. And so, it's been six months. If they don't have caseworkers out there, how are they going to have enough workers at this one? I want it to work. But do they, what is their excuse for not having case management work and invoiced against the contract?
President Bassan, Counselor Grouse, our provider executed their contract in March, as you know, and so it took some time to get staffed up and be able to provide those services. They have one case manager on staff right now, and they have three more in the queue, so they're about to have quite a bit of case management there. We also have YDI providing case management there and Ensemble Healthcare providing case management, so there is actually quite a bit of case management going on there, not enough. We could always use more, we could always use more funding for that program, but this will really change the services that are provided at Gateway West. We're going to have a lot more opportunity to work with clients. I just met with actually both Ensemble and CPLC case manager, case management teams today, and we talked about how many clients that they had identified that are getting ready to go into housing. So, I think that we're moving in a good direction, and I feel confident that they'll do a great job at this next service that we've given them.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. This contract names that they're responsible for caring for 50 women at the Women's Navigation, but I've heard the mayor over and over again in his talks recently say, "We're moving to 100," right? So, why is that not planned for in this contract?
President Bassan, Counselor Rogers, thanks for that question. So, currently, it's 50 for this particular program. When we open women's expansion, then that'll be another 50, so that'll be 100 total for women. Men's expansion is similar, right? So, there's a men's program for 42, then we'll open men's expansion, which will be another 50, so there'll be 92 men's beds.
Madam President, I've heard him say 100 men and 100 women, so not combined 100, like literally quoted, saying, so this, but this contract doesn't allow us to do that. So, I guess I'm concerned that we aren't going to be nimble, because you're going to have to come back to add and amend to this contract instead of just coming out the gate with what we say we're going to do. And so, maybe someone from, I know that's not your, necessarily your call, but why are we not just being proactive and planning for the full 100 that we're saying to the community that we're going to be helping?
Ms. Martinez? Mr. Soroso?
Madam President, Counselor Rogers, I think the plan is for that expansion to happen in September, and so I think we were trying to be conservative in putting forth a contract for the initial amount of 50, which is currently in existence, and will be looking to amend that as we have the additional 50 onboard. If we had the 50 right now, we would be adding it, but at this moment, we do not have the additional 50.
Madam President, then what's the plan to get more, 50 more women? Because it's also not reflected in the budget that we're reviewing right now. So, I'm extra concerned that we didn't even put a placeholder in the budget for this expansion. So, it just doesn't match.
Mr. Soroso?
Counsel President and Counselor Rogers, so, we didn't want to, again, to Ms. Martinez's point, we didn't want to overextend ourselves, we didn't want to enter into a contract for 100 until we are ready to do that. There have been lots of conversations about budget, we have talked about other funding sources as well. The state has money available, and we're working and talking with the state about homelessness and housing support. In addition, well, I just, I will leave that there, we can have, we can continue to have discussions in budget, but as that state money frees up, if it frees up in July, as we get grant agreements moving and we have agreements with them, then we will be poised to come back and amend this contract to add additional services as those beds become available in September.
Thank you, Madam President. I just would just say, then let's not say that to the community. Let's stop saying to the community, this is what we're, I mean, we've been hearing about how many people we're going to house at the Taj Mahal of Homelessness of Gateway, and the fact that we're only housing 50 people there. My district, my constituents are sick of seeing people camping outside across the street when they can't get into the building. Like, let's get them in the building. And then we're not even planning for it, it's just, I don't have faith that we're actually going to do it, so let's stop saying that when we're all out there in the community if we're not going to act, do it with the action that tells me we actually are going to do this. Because this says we're not, we're only going to stick to 50 people. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam President. Remind me again, ma'am, what is your title?
I'm a Deputy Director over Health and Social Services.
Okay, and I'm going to ask a question, and there's a little bit of leeway, this because I'm not going to, I know it's an opinion I'm going to ask you, but the last two, this one and 374, you put out an RFP and nobody's responded to it. Is there, you're the expert in this. Is there a reason why nobody's responding to these?
President Bassan, Counselor Champagne, we sent it out to everybody that we know of, so we have a good, awesome, diverse network of providers here in New Mexico, and they're all doing a lot of really good work. My sense is that they have a limited capacity in terms of how much they can serve, and they're serving at that capacity. So, I reached out to some of the best providers that I know and said, "Hey, this is open, I hope you consider." And they, as you can see on the list, we had some people pull it down, but then they didn't apply. I think that we had initially thought that our current provider was going to continue, and so we had hoped that that was going to be the case, but they decided not to, so we were disappointed by that. And I think we just really need to help our nonprofits here to grow and to build more nonprofits here and just continue to build that capacity up in New Mexico.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, any other questions or comments?
I would like to, Counselor Grouse? Counselor, Madam President, sorry about that. I would like to defer this.
Is that a motion?
I would like to move a motion to defer this.
There's a motion for deferral, how long?
For two weeks.
Is there a second? There's a second from Counselor Champagne. Counselors, all those in favor of a deferral for two weeks, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? I think that passes on a five-four. Motion to defer is approved. Moving on to final actions, Counselor Baca, R 131.
Thank you, Madam President. R 131, City of Albuquerque Project Recommendations to Mid-Region Council Governments for Inclusion in the 2045 Metropolitan Plan for Consideration of Future Federal Funding for the Albuquerque Metropolitan Planning Area. I move due pass.
There's a motion and a second from Counselor Feeblecorn. Counselor Baca, do you want to, well, first, let's go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be moving James Hoffman and John Edward into Zoom at this time to comment. James Hoffman?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, I made my comments during general public comment and actually made, I think, all the points that I wanted to during those two minutes. I can answer any questions or try to share my screen with any of the COG document references from my public comments that's necessary, otherwise I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Edward.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, John, thank you. Proceed, thanks.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. I had spoken earlier, just briefly, about this topic, known new fresh comments, and I guess the only thing I would say is that, you know, a city has its obligations as a community to serve the broader need of the people, and when it comes to transit, I believe that that is a broader served issue, and I would hope that you would please put the Transit Boulevard back on the public funding and make it a priority, as the plan has left it off for that to be done. Thank you very much.
Madam President, that concludes comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Counselor Baca to open.
Thank you, Madam President. I have floor amendment one, sponsored by myself, Counselor Feeblecorn, Counselor Lewis, and Counselor Peña. I don't know if we're putting it up top. One, this is to insert the projects lists, projects listed in the table on the attachment to this amendment into the table of the City of Albuquerque's list of projects that is attached to the resolution.
There's a motion for floor amendment number one. Is there a second? Second from Counselor Feeblecorn. Counselor Baca, do you want to explain or talk further about it, or any of the other sponsors?
This just adds projects into the city's list, the 2045 MTP projects.
Counselor Lewis? Counselor Baca, do you want to explain or talk further about it, or any of the other sponsors?
This just adds projects into the city's list, the 2045 MTP projects.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Menecucho, would you just clarify, make sure that on this latest list, what exactly does it say about, or the Transit Boulevard? Counselor.
Madam Chair, Madam Counsel President Bassan, Counselor Lewis, on this latest list, which we just amended during about a half hour ago, it does put in Transit Boulevard was already in, and the weekend amendment as a private road. It was upgraded or changed to a publicly funded road. The word municipal development means that it's been accepted, it'll be a public funded.
Okay. Do I need to, do we need to move an amendment to do that?
It's in the current, we just sent a new table down because there were some other changes.
Okay, so the amendment's fine. It includes everything in this table, which is, it says, Table of Projects -2.
Yeah, -2, yes.
I don't see it on here. Can you tell me, in that document, where is it?
It's the third one from the bottom. It says Volcano Heights Transit Boulevard.
Okay, I see that now. And it, so before it had private on there, and now we just took that out?
Yes. It was replaced with the word municipal development. It's publicly funded. They list the identifying agency that would be the owner.
Got you. Okay. All right, so it's the same amendment. We made that change to the list. So by adopting this amendment, we're adopting this list, which is -2.
Yes, Mr. Chair. There were also, we found also, Counselor Rogers identified an error. There's an existing project about to start construction in about two weeks or a month, I can't remember, and we had, it had, it needed its boundaries expanded. So that was the East Central project from Louisiana to Wyoming. Actually, construction will start with new lighting going to U-Bank, so that was added in. Counselors, you'll notice that all of the projects are late term. That means basically projects that aren't yet ready scheduled for construction. That one is listed as near term simply because it is funded and going to construction very soon here.
Madam Chair, and again, this is 2045, and I happen to agree with the public commenters that if, you know, again, I'm not sure why it was put on there as private, other than the fact that the, you know, the COG may not be prioritizing, but if we're going to prioritize it, we need to fund it. Otherwise, just not have it on here. And so it's on here, and it's just included in the plan as publicly funded. Great. Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions or Counsel Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to see mine, too, just to make, make extra sure. Because, and I just have to say, I'm not on Mr. COG this year, but the stretch of central that I'm talking about to make sure it's added here is the worst corridor in the entire country for pedestrian deaths, according to the Department of Transportation. And it has been on that list since like 2010. So the fact that that's not on here is shocking because regardless of what we believe, that's where most people are dying. And so I just want to make sure. Is it?
Madam?
Mr. Menecucho?
Madam Counsel President Bassan, Counselor Rogers. So yes, it's in two forms. The first project is the near term one, which I just explained, where the existing project from Wyoming to Louisiana was expanded to the U-Bank boundaries, consistent with the construction project about to start. That's near term. The second one was a new project was added in. That is Complete Streets East Central proceeding from San Mateo to Louisiana. That's late term because, again, that project has only had an initial study, and we have yet to fund it and begin identifying a construction date.
Thank you, Madam President. So what I'm hearing from Mr. Menecucho is we're good. It's there. Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions? Counsel Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam President. Not really a question, just a comment about the process on this bill. I think it was really lacking this year, and I would like for us to do a better job in the future. This is a very long list of projects to have been overlooked. It's really not okay, including three of mine, but many other counselors as well. And so for, in the future, I would like a little bit better working between council services and the administration to develop this list early and then run it past us so that we can make sure that this doesn't happen again. Because, again, this is a ridiculously long list of overlooked projects that matter to every single district up here. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? One of the sponsors to close? Oh, we're on the amendment. Thank you. You're good? Okay. All those in favor of amendment number one to R. 131, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Counsel Grout. We're back on the bill, R. 131. Questions or comments? Counselors? One of the sponsors to close. Counselor Baca urges our support. All those in favor of 131 as amended, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. We're moving on to other business. OC 35, response to mayor's statement of issues sent to the Intergovernmental Conference Committee. Counselors, the options of this is that the Director of Council Services shall file the response on behalf of the City Council, and the City Council may approve, disapprove, or amend the response no later than the next council meeting. Any counselor may file a separate response setting forth his or her position. Counselors, would anybody like to make a motion? Counsel Champagne, can you please?
Yes, Madam President. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, and a second by Counsel Grout. Any discussion or comments? Counselors, any amendments? The motion is for approval of OC 35. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. We're moving on to administration Q and A. Counselors? Counsel Champagne with questions?
Yes, Madam President. I have just a question for the administration. I've noticed, and I've gotten a lot of comments from constituents, and took the time after investigating this and kind of following up with their comments or concerns with me, and went to several other different locations and found the same thing that my park, Academy Hills, one of the parks in my district is, appears to be dying. And so after some investigation and looking in different districts, found that the grass and such looks like it's dying as well. And I thought, okay, well, this is coming out of winter and so on and so forth, but then I see something on social media that there's the project in your park in your district's green and beautiful, and it looked awesome. So it kind of begs the question to the administration of what happened to our grass during the winter time.
Counsel President and Counsel Champagne, we have Dave Simon with Parks and Recreation to answer your question.
Good evening, Madam President, Counselor. First, I want to thank you for taking your personal time and interest to go to the park. I think that's great, and I think some of our best and most productive conversations that we have are when we're out there on the ground kicking the tires, so to speak, or kicking the dirt in this case. So I just really appreciate your interest there. You know, in, this is the time of year when parks and all the vegetation in the parks starts to wake up, you know, from dormancy. So trees and grass in particular, and people pay a lot of attention to those things, and this is also the time of year that we do get a lot of inquiries about their, about people's neighborhood parks, and frequently we get the comment that the grass is all dead and what has happened. So sometimes, we've got a real problem. A lot of the time, it's just the normal dynamic of how grass wakes up from dormancy. So we have several different kinds of species sometimes in parks. Cooler season grasses, you know, like a rye will wake up from dormancy and start to green sooner. If you have zoysia grass, which you don't have a lot of in our parks, that also greens up sooner. And some of the other grasses, like fescue or a little bit of bluegrass, we have some of that, takes longer for it to green up in the spring. So people often are contacting us when they see a park not greening up, and some of it is and some of it's not, and some of it has to do with grass and the type, but some of it's not. So in the case of Academy Hills Park, I think what we have there is something that, you know, we really need to fix. I'm not real pleased with the condition of a couple of the spots in the park. I do not think by any stroke of the imagination, the park is dying or all the grass is in bad shape. I do think we have a really big problem with the most heavily used section of that park, which is sort of the athletic field. And that field has sort of suffered a, I guess we'll say, a triple whammy from, number one, some holdover issues with irrigation functionality over a couple of years. Secondly, a really dry winter, which we had this year. I can't remember the number of days we were in extended drought, but I think it was like 150. And then, third, the impact, the impact on that area, the park that you saw, that has really been overly impacted. And I think that that is on us for controlling the impact on heavily used sections of the park and trying to control that better. That one has a set of fixed goals in it, as you probably remember, has two fixed soccer goals. So when the goals are fixed, the play is fixed, the pattern of use is, wears out, often you see that on a football field, and that helps contribute to sort of repetitive use and impact in that area. So that's one where I think we really do need to do a better job of adjusting all those dynamics to make sure we don't cross a line that leads to the loss of the grass. Now, in this case, most of the time, a heavily impacted park over the winter will still come back just fine in the spring. I think we just pushed it a little too much, and while we have seeded that park a couple times, we need to really baby it now to bring the grass back once we can reduce some of the use. So that, I think that's what's going on in Academy Hills Park. Otherwise, the irrigation system seems to be functioning. We've started to fertilize. The irrigation's in program. We've started to aerate that park from stem to stern, which is sort of the next regular step in the spring startup worklist, sort of irrigate, aerate, fertilize, seed when necessary. So we are partway in through that worklist. I hope that gave you some information, but I think you learned a lot on sight, so.
Madam President, thank you for that. I agree that that soccer park is overused and has been neglected over the past couple of years, because it's a lot of dirt. Going to North Domingo Bacca, the rest of Academy Hills looks like Oso Grande, which looks like North Domingo Bacca, which looks like the one across from, in Counsel Feeblecorn's right there on Moon. The kick in the pants of it is, is that the brand-new $33 million park in District 6 doesn't look anything like that. So if all the parks are coming out being dormant, how is it that this park looks green and looks like it's in the middle of spring?
Madam President, Counselor, are you referring to Philchakone Park?
Yes.
That one, because we laid down a lot of fresh grass. Yeah.
So a lot of fresh grass constitutes a lot of watering during the winter time and such?
You know, we did have to, you do have to water in the sod and the fresh grass when you put it in. Yes, sir. It's not by any means the same level that we water in the summer, but you obviously have to get the.
Madam President, Counsel Rogers, I'm not picking on your park. I understand that it's beautiful. Madam President, Director, how many times do you water during the winter time?
You know, watering in the winter, Counsel President Bassan and Counselor, watering in the winter, first of all, we have different, you know, kind of restrictions in the winter. Water in the winter also requires temperatures. When we can do that, above 40 degrees, sometimes it has to be a little warmer. So you're often faced with trying to opportunistically water parks. We try to do that in the winter when we can. It's also a little bit more difficult, I'd say, because staffing levels are lower in the winter. So, for example, we can't, even like a nice warm winter day, it might be difficult to water as many parks as we'd like to at the same time in the winter, but we do do some winter watering.
Perfect. Madam President and Director, thank you again for the information. I hope that, moving forward, I can get less of these emails, and they can be very pleased with their parks, and not only my district, but the several districts I've visited.
Yeah, and I think, and I appreciate your interest again, because I think some of the parks you brought up and pointed out, some of them are facing some similar issues, which is we have a lot of youth sports in our community and a lot of outdoor recreation. This is a great thing to have. They all need someplace to play. I think I've got somewhere around 100 teams or so to locate on our neighborhood parks in the spring, and we have a lot of pressure on them. We do need to try to do a better job of reinvesting in the grass. So we need adequate water, fertilizer, aeration, you know, and other agronomy inputs. And we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, but in places, we've let it slide, and I think one of the night, one of the good things about when you see these problems happen, which we don't want to see, we have to learn from them, right? We have to look at our processes, look at our feedback loops inside our organization, and learn how we can kind of avert those kind of things.
Hopefully implement those.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Counsel Grout on this?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a follow-up to that. I've had several people reach out to me and tell me about ADO, the golf course, and their grass is in very bad shape. Can you tell me why and how it's going to get fixed?
Counsel President, Counsel Grout, a completely different set of problems occurred at ADO. We had sort of a perfect storm of grass management there. Three major pumps in the irrigation system basically went out at the same time. So for a prolonged period of time, we were manually watering the course, which I want to say right now, I think our staff are heroes because they were getting up sometimes an hour earlier than normal and staying later to try to get water onto the course. They're very hardworking and they care, and that's what it takes, right? But no amount of hand watering, and of course, that size is going to replicate the irrigation system. So due to, you know, issues in getting pumps repaired, all the things we face out there with getting vendors to respond and supply chain issues, two of the pumps, you know, took a while to get back online. Another one went out that they had to diagnose and took longer to get back online, so it was just a terrible situation to face. Now, the response to that, of course, is we are going to baby the course again this year, and pretty much the reseeding of the course, the entire course is already underway. And I do think it'll, it will come back. It's hard to see those impacts, but I think we'll bring it back.
Thank you, Madam President. Is the irrigation fixed now?
The pumps are back online, yes. So I think that's another place where, I will say, when we are using millions of gallons of water, my, you've heard me say it before, one of my highest priorities is water conservation. It's just what our city needs to do. It's the most precious resource we have. So I think while the system is functioning again, we have a big challenge to make sure that that golf course's irrigation system is more efficient and functions better. And that, you know, may mean some significant work on the system, which we need to analyze, plan, design, and, you know, implement. So right now, it's functioning, but, you know, another learning point there, Counselor, and I'm happy to talk about these things openly, is that where we can, you know, we need to like stock an extra tire, right? With, you know, something like that. You want to have some parts. It doesn't help that many of our systems have different types of parts, right? So it's a hard challenge to do that. But we can learn from these things, and our goal is to be able to, again, manage through a problem like that much better.
Thank you, Director. Madam President, I know that that golf course is the, brings in the most revenue of all the, all of the golf courses, so it's well-used, and we need to get it back in shape, so, thank you. I hope it goes well. Thank you.
Counselors, I can promise you, I've been in direct conversations with Director Simon regularly about multiple parks in District 4 and including ADO. Thank you, Director, for what you're doing.
Of course.
And here's hoping we all see green in money and grass. Counsel Feeblecorn? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Counsel Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. Different topic. My phones and emails are blowing up about the National Guard, so we definitely have to have a conversation about that. First question is, who is the National Guard working with when it comes to, I read through the list of things that they're here to do, very clear, but who is going to be working with them on the humanitarian efforts that were on that list? Because it's sure not going to be APD.
Counsel President Bassan, Counselor Rogers, I am not, I'm not aware of who that is, but we can get you an answer to that. We're more than happy to work with APD. We're more than happy to work with APD and find out who they have intended or who they have identified for that.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand that we've put Major Luke Langworth assigned to this for APD. I think the concern is, the community does not want to see ACS working with military. So are there any plans for the National Guard to be assisting with ACS?
Counsel President Basson, Counselor Rogers, I am not aware of any plans. I mean, this was, you know, as Chief Medina has outlined, right, they have some specific duties that are not enforcement duties, right? They will be doing prisoner transport, they will be securing crime scenes, much like PSAs do in a non-enforcement manner. But I am not aware that ACS has any plans, or the Guard has any plans, or APD has any plans for those two to work together.
Thank you, Madam President. Great to hear that. I think community will be happy to hear that. The other question is, on the press conference that the mayor had about this, said that they will not be in military uniform. However, we are seeing them in the community training in military uniforms. So when will that switch happen? Because right now, in community, they're in military garbs.
Counsel President Basson, Counselor Rogers, would be happy to follow up with you on that, but my understanding and what I've been told is they will not be in, we will not see military vehicles, we will not see military attire, but we'd be happy to follow up and get you an answer on that, and make sure that the statements that have been made about their attire hold true.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, because I saw a video myself of them training with APD downtown on, in Second and Mountain in full military outfits. So if we could make that switch even in training, that would really help community feel a little bit more comfortable. But my community, given the fact that they put our Major Langworth on that, my district is feeling like the heavy, I guess they feel like they're, we're the target of this operation, District Six. Given that our District Six major was added to that, obviously, the issues that we have in my district with homelessness, really, people are panicked in my district about them being here. So thank you for following up on the humanitarian efforts, because what I would like to see, I don't want to see them here, period, right? Because I think it sends a mixed message. To hear crimes down, but oh, we need help, sends a mixed message. And so for me, it's hard for me to tell my constituents and help them feel comfortable with this, when, of course, we didn't even get a heads up that this was happening, for me to even begin to prepare for the amount of calls and emails that we're getting about this. So what I'm asking for is, I'd like to also be in contact with the National Guard, whoever is the leader of the National Guard that's going to be here. I'd also like their contact information and to talk through how specifically the humanitarian efforts. Because if this is a true crisis, which if you look in my district on the state streets, it looks like a Third World country crisis right now. And so I would love to use the National Guard's expertise in setting up disaster relief areas, like big old safe outdoor space at the Gateways parking lot, where we can get folks triaged, get folks help, the way that they would do in an actual disaster. Like, let's, I want to focus on the humanitarian efforts. And to hear you don't have a plan for that, when you asked for that help from the governor's office, but there's been no plan given to who on our team is going to work on that, tells me what my community is worried about, is that this is not about humanitarian efforts. This is about militarizing. And historically, we heard from public commenters about what that means for our community. And so I'm concerned and would love to work with the administration to hear the community's concerns and really address them.
Madam President and Counselor Rogers, I am not aware of the contact for humanitarian aid. That does not mean we don't have one, so I want to be very clear. Also, I have not, I don't work with APD regularly. I've not seen the plan, so I don't know what the plan is, but I will find out, we will get you answers. But I just want to make it clear, doesn't, just because I don't know, doesn't mean someone doesn't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate that. I didn't send my questions ahead of time, so you didn't have time to prepare, even though fundamentally, we shouldn't have to. The folks who could answer the questions, like Chief Medina or deputy chiefs, should be here for us to ask these questions to. You shouldn't have to hold the brunt of that. So maybe we could ask our mayor to have our directors come back so that we can have these conversations, and we don't have to belabor it. Because this is, right now, boots are on the ground in my community, and I'm very concerned. So I just got to push back a little bit. Kevin, I love you, but I've got to push back a little bit on the fact that we can get some answers if those people were sitting here with us every meeting, as they should be. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Champagne on this?
Thank you, Madam President. Just something that you had said, and I just kind of need clarification on, the National Guard's going to come in and act as PSAs and do scene security and stuff, and the PSAs interact with the public. What's the plan when they do interact with the National Guard and it's hostile?
Counsel President and Counselor Champagne, I use PSAs as an example, because they are not enforcement, right? They don't arrest, they don't detain. However, we do have prisoner transport officers who are sworn officers. We, there are some differences here, but the Guard is training with APD now. They, I am certain, are covering those types of situations, and they will, you know, be trained not to engage the public in a manner that would compromise anything that we've done with APD up to now. You know, we are all very cognizant of the settlement agreement and, you know, concerns over APD's use of force, and by no means do we want to get into a situation where this other group exacerbates that. So part of the training will include, I'm sure, that interaction and what's expected to them when they're interacting with the public, so that we don't get in those situations.
Okay. And, Madam President, just, I ask that because I know PSAs carry mace for certain situations. They carry a radio, so that if it escalates, they don't have enforcement action, they don't even carry handcuffs, I understand that, too. But they have mace in order to defend themselves in sort of a situation that escalates before officers can arrive when AT2 is called. So are the National Guard, in the sense, if you're using that as an example, or they are less, in interacting with the public, are they going to be carrying mace, sort of deal, in a sense, to defend themselves? And if so, do they fall under APD's use of force?
Excellent, Counsel President and Counselor Champagne, excellent questions, and we will have to follow up with APD on that and what all is involved with the training and equipping these individuals.
Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Feeblicorn?
Thank you, Madam President. Not really a question on this, but I will just say that I'm incredibly disturbed by our continued war on the unhoused, and bringing the National Guard in to continue that war is very, very upsetting to me and many people in this community. But I will go on to my questions. I'm going to start with some questions for Director Ortega. And thank you for staying so late. I apologize for making you stay all night. But I believe that a lot of counselors, including me, have been having many, many meetings, many, many phone calls, and many, many emails around the number of companion animals who are being bred in our community. And, you know, the concern I've been getting is that our unhoused neighbors are breeding dogs and selling them. And I guess, from my point of view, there are a lot of people in this community breeding dogs and selling them. And because we can see our unhoused neighbors doing that, that it's top of mind for folks. But there are many, many other people doing that as well. Do you have an idea of what percentage of intakes at the shelter are coming from housed versus unhoused people?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblicorn, we do not collect that data, because in our eyes, that would be discrimination. So what I do do is I have those conversations with my team, because we're continuously looking at gap analysis and where we can help and where the need is. So what I can tell you is, it is very rare for us to see an unhoused person surrender their pet or even have a stray come into the shelter. The way that we're using the shelter for the unhoused is when we have a referral from ACS, when they're trying to get help either through substance abuse or housing, and they need a short-term location to keep their pet while they get back on their feet. That is where we see most of the resources, as far as our kennels, for the unhoused.
Thank you. And then, I did visit the First and I-40 area. There was a few folks selling puppies there, which I will remind everyone in Albuquerque, breeding without a license is illegal, selling a dog without a license is illegal. What are, what is the plan moving forward with ACS to take care of the folks in that area who do have puppies?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblicorn, we have been pretty proactive. I, myself, went out to First and, under the bridge in January, so that, you know, I always, I trust what the constituents say, but it's important for me also to verify and to go out and see what the situation is there, so that I can prepare my team to deal with that. When I did go out, I did see dogs, I saw a couple of puppies. I did not see people selling them. But what that told me is there needed to be more resources, there needed to be more, more taking our programs to them, because we do have free spay and neuters, but usually they're a little far away from where the encampments are. So we took our weeker van out, and we vaccinated many of the dogs. We didn't see any dogs that were undernourished or abused. They all looked healthy, they all looked socialized, they all looked happy. The bond with their person was really strong. So what we did was offer them vaccinations to make sure that they could stay healthy. And the way that we're able to do that, to gain the trust of the unhoused, because it's really hard to gain their trust. I mean, they seem to be targeted at every turn, and I think they're feeling that as well. So for us to gain their trust, not just I have gone out there, but my associate director, my deputy director, the captain of the field, so the high-level administration on my team are going out there and talking to them and educating them on the laws, but also saying that we have these resources for you. Now, our laws, we have some of the best pet laws in the country, and I get people calling me all the time, asking about our heart ordinance. And the one thing that they always ask me is, well, how do you enforce it? And my response to them is always, you can only enforce it if you have the resources to be able to provide to the people that are, that you are enforcing the laws with. And we're fortunate in the city that we do have those resources now, thanks to all of you. We have the resources to be able to provide spay and neuter, vaccination, our officer, the nuisance abatement allows us to issue civil fines now, which is making our laws more, people more willing to follow our laws, because now it's hitting them in the pocketbooks. Now, just with our housed, our unhoused, when we're called out for specific complaints, we go out and we send our officers out, they work with them, they issue citations, and the problem is that the pets are considered property. And so as much as people would like for us to just go in and take all of the puppies and take them to the shelter and adopt them out, because they're property, there is a due process to follow. And that due process is lengthy. It's just like our human laws. They have to go through a process of finding the evidence that proves that they're being abused or that they're being sold, and it has to go to the courts. And the courts are the ones who issue the, issue the court order to remove them with evidence or slapped them on the wrist for not following our pet laws.
Sure. Thank you. And just to clarify, you are offering spay and neuter to the population of folks who are living near that underpass?
We are offering it to them, and we're going to take it a step further. We're actually going to develop a transport team that can go out to those locations, pick up their pets, and take them to our vet clinic, our community vet clinic, get them spay and neutered, and then return them to where we picked them up in the morning. That way, they can all get spay and neutered. But during our visit on First Street, 75% of those pets were already spay and neutered.
Thank you. And then, not, I'm not asking this about unhoused populations, because I truly don't believe that's where our problem is. I think our problem is folks who are backyard breeding in our community, creating massive numbers of dogs and cats who are flooding our shelters. How can the public report an unspay or neutered dog or cat and have actual follow-up that will, you know, address that situation?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblicorn, that has been an ongoing issue. I believe last year, we actually put together a Zoom call with many constituents that were concerned about that. And I passed out the captain's phone number, to his dismay, probably, but it didn't totally consume him. The idea was, if you see a backyard breeder, or you see puppy litters at the Walmart or the Smiths, call us immediately, and you can call the captain directly, and we'll get a team out there immediately to issue citations. But what I would also say is, it's a supply and demand issue. If our constituents aren't purchasing them, then there's no reason for them to be bred. So I would highly recommend making that call, our Call 311, and you'll get a case number. And if you want to follow up to make sure that we've issued a citation, or that that person has gotten their pet spay and neutered, you can always follow up with that case number through IPRAM.
Thank you, and thank you for being here so late. Appreciate it. Madam President, I have another line of questioning that I think is for the administration. So I'm not sure who's asking, who's answering questions about indirect overhead. All right. Mr. Surratt, what is the current indirect overhead percentage on capital projects today?
Counsel President and Counselor Feeblicorn, we, for the last quarter of this year, we have bumped the indirect overhead up to 12%.
And how many projects are paying this higher fee during these last three months?
Counsel President, Counselor Feeblicorn, it would be any project that's underway that is processed for payment. So every project that we've been, every project that's going on right now in capital improvement.
And, Madam President, how many are there?
Madam President, Counsel Feeblicorn, I don't, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how many projects we have right now.
Madam President, is there someone here that can answer that question? I did submit it in advance. I kind of expected an answer.
At any given time, we have over 200, but Jennifer Turner may be able to expand on that.
Thank you, Madam President. So the question is, how many projects in this three-month period, when we've upped the indirect overhead to 12%, are going to be paying that additional fee?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblicorn, at any given time, we have hundreds of projects going on around the city. This higher rate applies only to five departments, and it ultimately is going to depend on which projects are billed during the three-month period. And sometimes contractors hold back their billing, sometimes they send multiple at once. So I, without knowing what billing, without being able to see into the future, I don't know everything that will be billed over the next three months. But typically, it is, at any given time, we have hundreds of projects going on.
Thank you, Madam President. So how much operating funds will be generated by this fee in this three-month period?
Counsel President Basson, Counselor Feeblicorn, we've estimated somewhere between $2 and $3 million.
Thank you. So we can estimate the amount, but we can't estimate the number of projects that are contributing to that amount?
Counsel President, Counsel Feeblicorn, we looked historically at what Council President, Counselor Feeblecorn, we looked historically at what CIP billings are towards the end of the year. So we looked at 2024 data, and we're using it for 2025. So that's how we made that estimate.
Okay. And what was the percentage, the IDOH percentage in June of last year?
Council President, Counselor Feeblecorn, I will let Jennifer Turner correct me if I'm wrong, but we have been hovering around 2%, which is much too low to...
Thank you, Madam President. That's not the answer I was given last week. Ms. Turner, do you know what the indirect overhead rate from June of last year was?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, I didn't bring my sticky with all of the notes, but it was just under 2%, and then was raised to 4.25%.
Madam President, I sent these questions in, and this is the answer I was given last week, and apparently it's changed, but let me just tell you what the answer was last week. Last week, up until July of last year, it was 1.04%. And then on July 1 of 2024, it went up to 2.75%. And then of October 1 of 2024, it went up to 4.25%. And then in the last three months of this fiscal year, it went up to 12%. Does that, is that correct, or has the answer changed since?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, that is correct.
Okay. And what will be the percentage in fiscal year '26?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, we sent down a budget with estimates in the 5% to 8% range. Again, this has been historically low. We charge, we are allowed 15% on federal grants. We know that we, 2% is not nearly enough to capture our costs and support everything that goes into these capital projects from an administrative side. So our budget includes estimates for indirect overhead that would generate, in the 5% to 8% range.
And Mr. Sarzal, what are you including in indirect overhead? What kind of expenses?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, indirect overhead includes support from legal because every contract that routes for construction goes through legal for review. As we have seen here tonight, we've talked about the time it takes for contracts to be reviewed and make it to council. Also, these projects are very intensive with respect to accounts payable. Lots of payments processed, lots of bill review, invoice review, lots of back and forth between accounts payable and the departments and the vendors on allowable expenses and payments. In addition to that, risk management weighs in on those contracts as well. So those are some of the costs that are included in their purchasing as well.
Thank you. So those are all salary expenses that you just listed. And so my question is, if we are taking capital dollars and putting more towards salary costs, will salary costs be going down in the next budget?
Council President, Madam Chair, that's typically not what we do. We just, we try to capture some of the costs.
Right. But Madam President, it seems to me that you're capturing the cost twice because I am, for example, we are already budgeting your position, Mr. Sarzal, right? That is a line item in our budget that we pay for, that the taxpayers pay for. And then if we're going to increase the amount of indirect overhead for capital projects that pay for your time, then we are either paying for your time twice, or the indirect overhead is being used for something else. And I don't know the answer to that question.
Council President, Counselor Feeblecorn, as we, you asked the question, how much we would generate from this in these three months. We would generate, you know, somewhere between $2 and $3 million based on our estimates. That money will go to the general fund. It'll go to fund balance. We have conversations up here all the time about what's fund balance? How much do we have in fund balance? Can we use fund balance for this or for that? That money would go back to fund balance, and it would be re-appropriated, or it would be there for this body to appropriate as we have seen done. If we have a fund balance and we're not at zero or in the negative, we have that available. So I understand a bit of the circular argument, like we put money out there and then we take money back. It's all general, it's general fund at that point. When we're talking salaries, you're funding salaries out of general fund. We're putting some of that general fund money back to be re-appropriated because we are charging these projects some overhead cost, or the cost of those services that are being provided internally.
Right. Thank you for that. I don't think it answered my question. I don't think that there's been an explanation of why we're taking capital dollars and making them into operating dollars and dumping them into the general fund in such a large amount. Why do we need that $3 million from the last three months of the year? Clearly, we are covering something that was overspent, but I don't know what it was, and I would like to understand why. Look, going from 1.04% to 2.75% to 4.25% to 12% is a lot in a year. What's the rationale for that?
Council President, Counselor Feeblecorn, we are catching up. Like I've said, we've been historically low. We probably should have done this years ago. We should have adjusted to a 5%, probably five or six or 10 years ago. We've been historically low. We're realizing that the cost of this administrative support is higher than 2%. Again, as we look at what we're allowed to do on the federal side, the federal government lets us do 15% and we can go higher if we calculate a higher cost for different circumstances, different departments. So we are, in this case, we are catching up towards the end of the year. We will have, you know, we should have some extra, or we should add a little to our fund balance. Like I said, we're catching up at the end of the year, and then going into the next fiscal year, we will settle on what is a more reasonable rate than 2% or 12%. 2% is too low. I agree, 12% is not sustainable for a long period, and it's not appropriate. But for a short term, I think it's okay.
Glad to hear you agree that that's an unreasonable charge. So again, I understand indirect overhead, but this is not a for-profit corporation, and we are not having to pay for salaries out of indirect overhead. This is a government entity where all of our salaries are paid for in our budget. This body appropriates those dollars. And so it just seems disingenuous to claim that we're not covering costs when every cost that you included in the indirect overhead, the support for legal, accounts payable, risk management, those salaries are paid for in our budget. So just real quickly, one more question. Are you allowed to charge indirect overhead for state capital dollars?
Council President, Counselor Feeblecorn, we are not.
Right. And so we are charging 12% indirect overhead on capital projects that are not state-funded, which means that we're mostly using it for geo-bond-funded projects. Is that correct?
Council President, Counselor Feeblecorn, geo-bond and GRT, GRT bond and GRT-funded projects that are capital in nature.
So those are things that the citizens of Albuquerque vote on, expecting them to be capital projects. And we are transitioning money from capital projects to operating expenses. Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Champagne on this, but just, Counselor Sanja, sorry that I didn't get to you earlier. I promise I am coming back to you to get back to, and I have others, but I know it was on this, and I skipped you on that last time. Counselor Champagne.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the other counselors who were waiting. And this was, again, something that was brought up and coming up for the comments. What is your title?
Counselor President, Counselor Champagne, I'm the Chief Financial Officer.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Who determines, Madam President, who determines the CIP IDOH rate?
Counsel Presidents, Counselor Champagne, our Department of Finance and Administration.
Okay. And what's the process and timeline for setting it each year?
Counsel President, Counselor Champagne, we have an administrative instruction that says we can, we will calculate it, we will calculate at least annually.
Okay. Madam President, how does, how does the mid-year change in the IDOH comply with administrative instructions?
Counselor Champagne, or President Basson, Counselor Champagne, there's nothing in the administrative instruction that says we cannot adjust that throughout the year. It just says we will calculate it at least annually.
So it doesn't require the rate to be set annually by OMB?
Counsel President, Counselor Champagne, it needs to be calculated, and, you know, we can adjust and have over the years.
Perfect. Thank you. Madam President, you had mentioned that it funds into geo-bond and such, GRT bond projects. Is this being used? Is this 12% being used at the Biopark for its project, its GRT-funded project right now?
Counsel President, Counselor Champagne, capital projects that are billing in this period would be subject to that, but we do have, again, we have discretion with that.
And how does this conflict, Madam President, how does this conflict with the resolution passed in 2016 where it directs 100% of the Biopark GRT revenue to capital improvements?
Counsel, Counsel President, Counselor Champagne, the resolution that was passed, you know, I do believe that we're allowed indirect overhead costs, we're allowed labor costs. It doesn't all have to be 100% capital project to comply.
Okay. Madam President, how many projects are delayed right now or could be reduced because of this new percentage rate?
Counsel President, Counselor Champagne, I'm not aware of any that would be delayed because of this. Construction is ongoing, and bills will continue to flow.
Okay. With that being said, would you be able to provide, I'm sorry, Madam President, with that being said, would you be able to comply a department-level breakdown of the rates assessed in 2025 to include the dates and such?
President Basson, Counselor Champagne, I believe our accounting department in municipal development could probably pull that data together for fiscal '25.
Do I need to officially request that?
We can get that for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the leeway, counselors.
Mr. Sarzal, not this second, but can you get me how this is impacting the North Domingo Baca Aquatic Center? Please. Thank you. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have, I'm just going to touch on a few things, and since this was added to my list, I'm going to, I'm going to touch on this as well. You know, I'm actually surprised that we weren't charging an indirect cost. So I'm shocked that we were charging 1% because this is something that the mayor didn't decide. This is something that, in order to administer some of these grants that we get, we're allowed to charge. I know that at the county, when we were like building the visitor's center, I think they had like a 15% indirect, don't quote me, but I don't know what theirs was. I know UNM actually, I think their indirect cost is like 40%. It's something really, it's pretty high. So I'm surprised that we hadn't been charging that before. I think that there should be some kind of an established amount because my understanding of how this works is that we charge an indirect cost to recoup administering, administering, you know, these grants and the projects. And then the money that, yes, as Mr. Sarzal was saying, that money then goes into the general fund and we're using it. So I'm actually surprised we weren't. So I think it's good. I don't know whether 12% is the amount, 10% is the amount. I would look at the county. I would look at some other, the rail rancho and see what they're charging so that you guys can come up with something that's, you know, like a decent amount. It is kind of a bummer to go from 0 to 12% in how it impacts projects. Like, I can understand where, you know, because I know that's what was happening to the visitor's center. I remember when we asked, how much is it going to cost? And then they gave us an amount. And then when they added the indirect, and then they added the, those like added amendments, I think it's called and stuff like that. So then the price kept going up and up, and we kept having to go to Santa Fe to get money. So I'm very interested in that. I think that's a great way for us to recoup some, administering some of our costs. But, so that's just a comment. And then I just wanted to say to Director Simon and to Jeanette Baca, she went up by herself and advocated for some money for some state capital to do some improvements at Alamosa. And I just want to say, it's just starting to look spectacular. So thank you so much. And then, and then I wanted to add a comment to Mr. Whalen. I seen that they started to put up trees on Central, so right on. I'm so excited. I was tired of seeing those nubs out there. So I seen a bunch of little red flags on all those trees, so that's really cool. Then I wanted to also say that the Route 66 arches, they're still out. I mean, I don't know who's responsible for that, but I know, I think Dr. Sengel had let me know that, that she was told that everything's good to go, but they're still out. So somebody can go out there at night and check out not just the large arches, but the smaller arches as well. And then also, I just want to say, it's not a competition. It's very terrible that East Central is, you know, one of the deadliest, but actually the deadliest, and I think because of, because it's county-city, is Coors Boulevard to the south is actually the deadliest. But, so we both have districts that have really astonishing amounts of pedestrian deaths. So, so yes. And then because everyone was talking about the National Guard, I just wanted to say that my comments were that, you know, that I'm glad they're here, but I proceed with caution in terms of how they are doing their work. Because once they start to do the enforcement, I, you know, I have really big issue with that. But as long as they're doing humanitarian efforts, I'm good with that. And then one of the last things that I wanted to add is that, you know, we had the folks that were here on, I think, Resolution 131, no, not 131. It was the one on the MRA, and this is for our staff and maybe for the others. But I just really wanted to talk a little bit about, about during going through the IDO process on how we define blighted, right? So talking to the constituents and kind of their concerns, it's similar concerns that we have on West Central. It's just that now the word blighted is used as a defining on how projects are built. And sometimes it seems though that in MRAs, the term blighted is being used in areas that have more potential, and then areas like West Central and maybe others are still getting, are still getting left behind, right? So we see a lot of great, positive projects coming about, but where does that leave us that when the MRA was first developed, where does that leave us in terms of that was kind of the ray of hope that these areas were going to be revitalized? So I think we really need to have that discussion. And then just to say that on this issue, and I'm just going to bring up an earlier issue, I just want to make sure that when we're expanding an MRA, that they had said that when they went to the Development Commission last year, that it was voted on, that it was deferred at the commission, and the community actually went and spoke against it. But then after that, and this is a Kevin thing, then after that, they went back and, when it was deferred, and then when they went back to vote on it when it was deferred, those two properties, the Burger King, were left out, and they voted on it without those two properties. But then when it came to City Council in Laps, those two properties were still left out. But then when it came here, those properties were included in. So I just want to make sure, and I know we have, you know, I talked to Mr. Badia, and he was saying that we can add those amendments, but it is a little worrisome that we have this whole laid-out process to add new properties, right? And when we do that, then all of the sudden, we go through this process and eliminate some properties, or at the last, at the end, we can actually add an amendment to just add whatever we want, right? And so this is where the community is feeling like they were left out of the process. So I really want us to think about that and how that looks moving forward with those amendments, because it seems as though what we did was within the confines of the law, but it's kind of... but it's kind of scary. So I'd like for us to have that discussion, and if you want to add to what I just said, if there's something incorrect, Kevin. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Morrow?
Certainly, Counsel President Basson, Counselor Pena, and we are happy to look into that for you. We, as mentioned, did a little bit of research this afternoon. My understanding, subject to potential correction by Metropolitan redevelopment, was that the original properties were included on the notice, they were part of the discussion. The recommendations from the ADC removed those from consideration, so ADC as a recommending body did not include them, but there's, they are ultimately not the decider. And so that's because they had been previously noticed, it was appropriate or at least allowable for consideration by this council.
Thank you, Madam President. So, but, so then the neighbors, even though they were noticed initially, then it was gone, they think they don't have anything to worry about, and then all of a sudden it's back, right? So that's where I think we need to really pay attention. So thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Lewis, or, I'm sorry, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Got a couple of questions lined up here. The first question that I have is in reference to the National Guard, and I want to know why the mayor, who is actually the police chief, did not consult with City Council in reference to the decision to bring the National Guard here in Albuquerque?
Counsel President Basson, Counselor Sanchez, I cannot answer that question. We can have, we can talk with the mayor, we can talk with the police chief, we can get a response for you, but I do not have a response today.
And why do you not have a response when it happened, and you're the CAO?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, I am the Chief Financial Officer. I do not do law enforcement. I am here in place for Samantha, who could not make it tonight, but I do not do law enforcement. Was not part of that decision. I'm telling you that we don't have an answer for that question. I do not believe that question was given to us in advance, so we're not prepared for that.
Do you think the National Guard should be here?
Counsel President, Counselor Sanchez, my opinion in this, I don't know that it matters, but if you would like my opinion, I think our police force is more than capable of handling crime, and I think our statistics show that.
Thank you. Another question is, I'm still waiting for lights to be replaced on West Central. I thought we were going to have those lights replaced, and we're still waiting for those replacement lights, and there are none so far.
Counsel President, Counselor Sanchez, we'll have Jennifer Turner, Director for GMD.
President Basson, Counselor Sanchez, so we, because we are in litigation involving the contractors involved in putting up those lights, we, our hands were a little bit tied, but appreciating the public safety component of having those lights back on, we worked with legal and we're going a different route of getting replacement lights from a new vendor, and we've ordered those, and we're, they have long lead times, as all lights do, and so we're literally waiting for them to arrive. So I think, last time you had asked, I had told you spring. It's still spring. I'm working with my team, I've told them this is a priority, and it's not just you, it's other stretches on Central as well. And so I know I've heard from other counselors that are very worried about their lights as well. And so we have ordered them, they're on the way. It won't impact the litigation from what I told to put them up as soon as they come in.
Is there any way that you could put some sort of temporary lighting? Right now, at my office on Central, I'm finding an extra amount, there's a lot more needles, a lot more human feces, a lot more urination. The lights are, would help if they were in the area. My cameras have been ripped off the front of the building. When you walk outside, and I'm just like every single person up and down Route 66, you walk outside the doors and you have to, and something's going on, something's wrong. You walk out there and there's drug dealing in the streets, there's no police, I don't see any police, I don't see ACS out there, and they are running rapid. At night, the people that are out there drug dealing, they control the streets. When the business owner arrives at his business in the morning, we have to deal with all of those things that are going on. So lights would really, really make a difference. Is there any way that you can, for the community, for the business community up and down Central, provide portable lighting where portable lighting is needed?
President Basson, Counselor Sanchez, I will talk to my team about that. Sometimes the lights take so long to come in that it's just better off to put the lights that are on order in, but I will look if there's targeted areas that need additional lighting and see what we can do.
This morning, I walked up to, I walked up to my business, and I asked the people to leave, and they immediately started threatening me. So this is the kind of city that we live in, a city with failed leadership, a city that's not doing anything to protect the citizens of Albuquerque or the business owners. It's something that's happened every day, and it's getting worse day by day. Every single day, we're having to deal with this as citizens of Albuquerque and as business owners up and down Central. Something needs to be done, lighting needs to be out there so that it can at least help. Right now, there's not been lighting in my area for months upon months upon months. Something needs to get done now.
Do you have any more questions, Counsel Sanchez?
Another thing that I have is the issue with the numerous vacant buildings that are up and down Central that are getting into. There's a portable building at 60th and Central, and that portable building is in disrepair. There's weeds all around it. The doors have been locked, broken into, the locks have been broken, and there is individuals in there right now using fentanyl, prostitution, and you name it. So that needs to get taken care of ASAP. The city should actually be finding itself for what kind of shape that building is in.
Is that it, Counsel Sanchez? Counsel Groun?
Thank you, Madam President. I have, I'm going to go back to Triple H. The reason why that could, I don't know how to say it, CPLA. They are providing service out at the West Side Shelter. They're actually the operators of the property, of the building, and then they also have that second contract to case management for guests under 60. So it was answered earlier that they have started, although they have not invoiced anything. The contract was executed on March 3rd, but it was backdated to January 1st. I need to understand why it's backdated. Are we paying them from January, but we still don't have any, anybody working? I need to understand why it's the end of April, and four months later, we still don't have anybody working?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, so the language going back to January is a standard language that's put in most of the contracts, and it allows for some flexibility when contractors need to get started because contracting process can take some time. In this case, Counselor Groun, they did not start early, so they did start staffing up and proceeding with the contract as of March.
So they do have some, do they have people? What I am concerned about, I mean, there's, I have a lot of concerns. What I'm very concerned about is I have, there are reports that there are people out, there are people out that, working at that facility that are being told to rush people into housing, but they don't have case managers. And what's going to happen is they're going to be rushed into a situation where they're in housing, but it won't last very long because they don't have those wraparound services. They'll end up on the street because they haven't, they haven't, the case managers haven't taken the time to help them properly. And we sure don't want that to happen because then they'll end up on the street and in worse condition. So, and then, so that brings me back to this last contract that the same company has been awarded, and how long is it going to take them to get that up and running? I don't understand why it takes so long to get a contract up and running and get people, you should have, you should have your ducks in a row when you say you could do this contract. You know, you should have a plan in place, and I, it's already been four months, they have not invoiced one, one invoice on that case management contract, and I'm afraid that's going to happen, and we're not going to have 100 people, women, being served. $1.8 million for an entire year to service 50 women is not very much money, and it's not very, it's not very cost-effective. So I, I need to understand how this is a good use of our money. I want it to work, but I think it should be, we should be helping a whole lot more, many, a lot more people. And how long is it going to take them to get up and running?
So, Madam President, Counselor Groun, I want to state, it hasn't been four months. They have been under contract since March 3rd, and it takes time to get individuals staffed up. So if they are requested to hit the ground running the minute the contract is executed, that would mean that they would be probably paying out of pocket ahead of time to find the right individuals to staff up. So many of the individuals don't have that ability, and so once the contract is executed, then they're starting to work on getting the staffing to do the contract. And Director, Deputy, excuse me, Deputy Director Verplu mentioned that they already have a case manager out there that's working with the residents out at Gateway West, and we wholeheartedly agree, without wraparound services, we are setting individuals up for failure, which is exactly why we have all the services that we provide, not only at Gateway West, but Gateway Center.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, yes. I still don't understand why it's backdated to January 1, then. That's two months of nothing.
Madam President, Counselor Groun, again, as I stated, that's kind of a common thing that is put in these contracts, and so that was included here. They did not make the decision to start working in January, but rather in, in March when the contract was executed.
Okay. Well, it was, that contract was actually approved in November. Did you know that?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, the contract that was approved in November was for them to be the operator for Gateway West.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We just, I just want it to move faster in helping people more.
Ma'am, I didn't answer one of your comments. The reason why we asked Madam President, Counselor Groun, for immediate action tonight was for that very reason, to get this going, because there will be a transition period from the current provider to CPLC, and so that was one of the reasons why we were asking for immediate action tonight, not only for that contract, but for the family navigation center as well.
Okay. Well, in two more weeks, we'll work on that. I do have a note here that, are you sure that that contract was not approved by council in November? The one that was executed in March?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, now you have me second-guessing, but I'm almost positive that the one in November would have been for them to start as the operator in mid-December, but I absolutely will go back and confirm that.
Okay. I think they were at the same meeting, but we'll check. So now let's move to the social services contract for Sierra Health. That one is helping guests at the Gateway West that are age over 60. How many guests have been seen, have they seen with that contract since it was executed?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, in looking at my notes, they have actively engaged with 132 of our seniors that are out at Gateway West.
How many are there out there?
There are approximately, it varies, but anywhere from 160 to 180 at any given time.
Okay. How many have transitioned into, from out of the gateway into housing?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, it's our understanding that I believe, I'm looking at the numbers now, there have been a total of nine that have transitioned out, five that are being identified as ready to move out, as being financially ready, and then there's 10 that they have pending completion of their ID documentation. So potentially, we're looking at, if I'm doing my, about 24?
Okay. Very good. Where are they being placed?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, some have been placed in long-term care, personal caregivers, roommate program, and then also the Gateway's Housing and Treatment Navigation Center located at Gateway Center.
So how long will they be at the navigation center?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, the plan is for them to be there for 90 days before they're transitioned into housing.
Okay. And let's see. Okay, that, I think that's that. All right. So thank you for all of that information. So to follow up on that, this would be for the CFO or CAO, DCAO, or COO. Who is responsible for overseeing contracts to make sure that they are being executed?
Counsel President, Counselor Groun, that is up to the department director and their staff. It's their discretion. Finance and administration, you know, my folks in finance administration are not aware of timing on contracts, need on contracts, scope on contracts, so we leave that all up to the departments. They have discretion in when they execute those contracts and, you know, oversight of those contracts.
Thank you. Thank you. I have just Parks and Rec, and I'll go to them. Doctor, or Director, Simon. Thank you, Director, for being here still. What time do staff start to arrive to open city pools in the mornings?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, soon. No, just kidding. Most pools open at 6:00 AM. So our first staff start to arrive about 30 minutes prior to the opening date, excuse me, the opening time, so 5:30. In one or two other cases, we might open a pool earlier, for example, if there's a special program.
Right. How many people open in the morning typically?
The head lifeguard arrives first. The head lifeguard is then followed by one, two, three other staff within 20 minutes to a half an hour.
Okay. What is the safety's protocol for employees opening or closing a lot?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, I would say, first of all, we've tried to make sure that the immediate environs around our pools have some safety features to them, such as good lighting around, and that the entrances are clear and have very clear sightlines to them, first of all. Those would be good kind of safety and crime prevention techniques. But we, we train our staff to, to think about these things because safety is very, very important to us, obviously. So we train staff to, when they arrive, to park, you know, in parking spaces that are closest to the pool entrance, first of all. We then also train them in, I guess, what, you know, we would call situational awareness, which we all should have when we're out and about, certainly in situations where there's some, you know, degree of concern. And then we, we would train and advise them that after they've determined that the situation appears safe, to exit their vehicle and go immediately to the doors, let themselves in, to the, at the facility entrance. Then the, the doors are locked behind that first staff person. Now, when the other staff arrive, they typically phone the staff person inside the building so that they can provide some eyes on the other staff who are arriving. And then the doors, you know, the facility in the opening time period And then the doors, you know, the facility in the opening time period always remain locked until the public session begins.
Thank you. A final question on this subject, is there, is there any kind of alarm system that they can call, or what's the protocol for?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, all of our pools have security systems, which include sort of what you'd call a panic button or an emergency silent alarm station inside the facility. And, you know, most of the staff and the phones, the computers that we carry around now that are phones, also have, you know, an emergency call feature to them, so we always, obviously, want to be, we remind staff that that, that phone is actually an emergency call device. And then, you know, we have been looking at ways to try, we're always looking at ways, frankly, to improve safety for the staff and the public, and we are, we've been looking into technical approaches that could include sort of a hand-carried alarm feature, like a badge, that would, would have a signal system embedded in that, which a staff person who's arriving, you know, at those hours could, could have with them.
I think, Madam President, I think that would be a great idea. You know, these, a lot of these employees, they're young, and we need to be making sure that they are safe. You know how my mother, she's older, and she has one of those Life Alert necklaces that she wears? Oftentimes, our lifeguards don't have any pockets or anything, so it's always, not always easy to carry a phone, maybe something around their neck, but we need to make sure that they're safe, because it's not always safe, and we need to make sure that our young ones and our old adults are all safe. So please look into that more, and I hope that we have a good season this year, and kids enjoy the pools. They are great facilities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President, Counselor, and I think, you know, our larger concerns in this particular area would be at the indoor pools, particularly during the wintertime. I'd say the summertime, we're, we're in much better shape, but thank you for your interest in the subject. We are looking at the technical options here, all of them do carry some complexity and/or cost.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right.
I have one final question. Mr. Sora, so when can we expect the third quarter revenue and expense report?
Counsel President, Counselor Groun, I was not ready for that question tonight, and I will get back to you, but we just ended the third quarter. I get we're at the end of April, but we're, expenses need to process, bills need to be paid, so that typically is five, we put that together five to six weeks out from the end of the period closing. So it should be sometime in May.
Mid-May, perhaps mid-May?
Counsel President, Counselor Groun, should be mid-May, we will have those numbers.
Okay, that would be great, because I know we just got the second quarter just this last week, and so as we're processing the new budget, we would like to see that third quarter before we make all of our final decisions, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Sora, so going back to the IDOH questions, what are the five departments that are being affected with the 12%?
Madam President, Planning, General Services Department, DMD, Arts and Culture, and, am I up there? All parts, Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Counselors, we're done with questions for administration. I would like to make a motion to reconsider R. 131. There's a second from Counsel Champagne. For the record, R. 131 is City of Albuquerque Project Recommendations to Mr. Cog for inclusion in the 2045 Metropolitan Plan for Consideration of Futural Federal Funding. The amendment needed to be changed and amended again, per our staff's recommendation. So with that being said, and there's a motion for reconsideration, all those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. I don't know where Counselor Lewis and Counselor Baca went, so, counselors, just for future reference, I promise when you're president, I will give you the courtesy of talking to you if I'm going to leave a meeting, so if you can please offer me that, I would be grateful. R. 131 is back on the table. I would like to make a motion to approve Amendment Number Two. Amendment Number Two is going to be explained by our staff. And Counselor Groun, with a second.
Madam, Madam President, members of the council, principally, there's two changes. The first change is to the last two bottom items, the Central Avenue improvements from East of you, from Louisiana to U-Bank, from San Mateo, Louisiana. That was a clerical error. When I was cut and pasting during the supper break, I accidentally cut and pasted in the descriptions for the Transit Boulevard rather than for complete streets, and those are just too big of a change for the clerk to make. That's a clerical error on my part. Second one is, is that since, after we passed the Volcano Heights Transit Boulevard and changed it to public-funded, DMD just informed us that, they just informed us that it would be better to be private-funded, and Counselor Lewis agreed. So this change is out public to private.
It would be nice if Counsel Lewis was here, but, okay. Okay, so, counselors, any questions? For Counsel Peabody-Corn.
Thank you, Madam President. Can, can you just scroll? I would like to see my projects. Just for the record, Madam President, I, you know, it would be nice if this was in our iPad, if we got to look at it, this is a very long document, and I'm a little frustrated, but thank you.
But, Madam President, that we did put them in your iPads, so if you were to refresh, you can see it in there. We tried to put it in there just so that, just in case, I apologize.
Thank you all for sticking with us. You never know what's, I told you earlier tonight, you never know what's going to happen, so stick around. You know, I, I'm going to ask a question. What is the, what is the timeline on this, and when does it need to be done by?
The MTB will vote on it this Friday.
So it needs to be done?
Needs to be done.
So then I won't make that motion. Okay. Counsel Peabody-Corn.
Can somebody tell me the name of the file that's in our iPads, because there are two in here, at least in mine?
There's probably going to be Amendment Number One, and then there's going to be Amendment Number Two, and this is going to replace Amendment Number One, which passed earlier tonight when we were discussing the bill.
Okay.
So it'll be labeled as B.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, counselors? Okay, so, the motion is for Amendment Number Two to R. 131. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes on a seven-zero vote. Counselors, we're back on R. 131 again, as amended again. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of 131 as amended, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes on a seven-zero vote. Thank you for your patience. There being no further business, this city council meeting is adjourned.